Let's call this meeting to order. This is the March nineteenth meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Could, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Dina Kova-Dimitraki.
Present.
And Mr. Grant Todd.
Here.
Member Jeffrey Santa Cruz.
Here.
Member Amanda.
Here.
Member Teresa Rosenberg.
Here.
And Chair Rich Woodfield.
Here, present, ready to roll. All right, let's look here, we've got approval of the minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted from the February nineteenth meeting, or does anyone have any questions or comments?
Right.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, quick agenda overview. Item six B on the agenda, a hanger for Hampshire Aviation at sixty-five Airport Road, and item nine A, a minor site plan for commercial building on Shaker Road, have both been continued at the request of the applicant to the April sixteenth meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to continue those meet, continue those applications to the April sixteenth meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, it brings us to item five, Design Review Applications by Consent. On the agenda, we have got items five A, B, C, D, E, and F. Items on the consent review are done in total, in a group. If anyone has any questions or comments or concerns about any of those, could you please make yourself known? If not, any member of the board have any of those applications they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? No? If not, I'd take a motion to approve those applications by consent with architectural design recommendations and move them forward.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, moves us right on to Determination of Completeness by Consent. Determination of Completeness is a formality, there's no public testimony taken for these two items, three items that are on the agenda tonight, no comments from the audience, and we're just basically finding the application complete and set in the public hearing. There's three items on the design review, design, excuse me, there's three items on the determination of, like, determination of completeness by consent. Item six A, one fifty Manchester Street, items.
Six B was.
Six B was pulled, and six C is two-ten Bog Road, N H S C O T. Want to take them separately?
We need to take them separately because six A is regional.
Okay, so item six A on the agenda is one fifty Manchester Street. Staff has determined the application complete, has determined that it is a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and set the public hearing for the April sixteenth Planning Board meeting?
Do we have to also state it's a regional impact?
Pardon me?
And it's a regional impact.
And it's a regional impact, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item six C on the, two-ten Bog Road, again, staff has found the application to be complete, it is not a development of regional impact, and would like to set the public hearing for the April sixteenth meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and set the public hearing for the sixteenth of April?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that moves us on quickly to the next section in our agenda, which is extensions by consent, a new, a new topic for us to discuss tonight. We have two of them, again, by consent, and no public testimony, no public, no public comments on these two items. Again, an administrative piece, which is extensions of existing or approved plans. We've got fifteen Hot Hole Pond Extension, which is item seven A in your agenda. A motion on a second to approve the extension of a March twenty, a March twentieth, twenty twenty-four approval to the March twenty twenty-seventh, as stated in the staff report. Any update on that, or anything that we need to know about that? It's just an extension from an existing confirmed plan, approved plan, right?
Correct, they weren't going to meet their one-year deadline to meet present conditions, but they will probably in the next few weeks be ready for final approval.
Okay, so just close but not finished. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve that consent extension? Hang on just a second, let me just dot my i's here, cross my t's. Sorry. Okay, so it's just staff recommends that, again, there's no findings of fact or anything in this, correct? Okay. The grant the two-year extension from March twenty twenty-four, major subdivision application, conditional approval for the eight-unit residential cluster condominium development at fifteen Hot Hole Pond, and set the new expiration date for March twentieth, twenty twenty-seven. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that extension as outlined?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Seven B is thirty-three Old Loudon Road Extension, that's a motion and a second to approve an extension of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three approval, and push that out to the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-six. Again, as stated in the staff report, staff recommends that, the planning board recommends if we want to, if we want to approve it, to grant a one-year extension from the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, conditionally used permit and architectural design review, conditional approvals for the proposed hundred and forty-four unit age-restricted development at thirty-three Old Loudon Road, and set the new expiration date to August sixteenth, twenty twenty-six. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that extension as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and that brings us to Design Review Applications Public Hearing, none? Awesome. And we'll move right into our Site Plan Subdivision C P Amendment in public hearings. Let's read, item nine A was off the record, right?
Yep.
So nine B, if we could bring that into the record.
Ross Engineering LLC, on behalf of James McSherry, requests approvals for a minor condominium subdivision and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations for the conversion of an existing duplex into two condominium units at four and six Myrtle Street in the downtown residential district.
Okay, is the applicant, applicant here? Come on up. We get a staff update while the gentleman's settling in here?
Yes, and then before we have him speak, we need to.
Determine it complete.
Determine it complete.
Yep.
Open the public hearing.
Okay.
But as far as a staff update, this is a very simple application. The property exists, it's fully developed, it is a duplex. The only change that is being made is in ownership, so that each unit can be sold separately instead of the entire property being sold as one. So, I'm, there's no changes to the site, just very simple staff has.
Administrative piece.
Yeah, straightforward.
Okay. Again, staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing is open, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
Thank you, Alex Ross, from Ross Engineering. I prepared the plans that you have in your application, and I think Emery kind of summed it up, really simple project, existing multifamily, that had been that way for, it almost seems like a hundred years from the records we can find. So just a simple condo conversion. I did go through the staff memo, and, and we're happy with the conditions there, happy to add the necessary notes and information as requested.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Looks pretty straightforward, a few waivers. Okay. Okay, thank you very much, we'll close public testimony, both, public hearing. Looking for, well, so in this case, we've got a findings of fact, we'll use the information that's been presented here in the packet, and as our findings of fact, the planning board's making the decision, with that in mind, we're looking to grant the waiver requests below from the listed sections of the subdivision regulations using the criteria RSA six seventy-four thirty-six-two N two, in section thirty-five oh eight of the subdivision regs, and those are outlined with A, B, C, and D in your packet for topography, soils, lighting, and existing vegetation. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the two-unit condominium subdivision of four and six, four to six Myrtle Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions, one A through E, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, and subsequent conditions, one, two, and three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you are all set.
Thank you.
Easy as that, huh? Hope they're all that easy. All right, move on, item nine C in our agenda, if we could read that into the record.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC, on behalf of St. Paul's School, requests approvals for a minor subdivision and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations for a two-lot subdivision at Tax Map Lot seven-two-three-Z twenty-eight, parcel six-five-seven-seven, addressed as three-ten Pleasant Street in the medium-density residential district.
Okay, nine C, three-ten Pleasant Street, do, do, we have a determination of completeness component in this as well, so, staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for tonight. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and not a development of regional impact?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, the public hearing is open, if we could get a quick staff update on this one, that would be great.
Sure. This also is a pretty simple, straightforward request. The, the existing parcel is pro, of little over twenty-seven acres, it has a house on it towards the front of the parcel, and they are simply requesting to split off the house in an acre and leave the remainder.
Okay, I looked out to see Mark Sargent, he's not here.
You put me in his spot.
Oh my goodness, it's not a planning board meeting without Mr. Sargent here for at least once, so.
I'll have to tell him he can take all mine, too.
Welcome to the, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Dan Mullen, from Richard Bartlett and Associates.
All right, Dan, tell us a little bit about this project.
It's at three-ten Pleasant Street, and as was stated, it's a very straightforward, one-acre lot, cut off of a twenty-seven-point-one-nine acre piece of property that St. Paul's owns. They're not proposing to make any changes to the site at all, and the lot as presented meets, exceeds the minimum requirements. We have done, you know, sufficient topography and wetlands to prove that, and we're not asking for any variances or conditionally used permits, anything like that, and it's fairly straightforward, nothing more to it.
Okay, questions from the board, Jeff?
I only have one. There's a garden shown on the plan that actually straddles the property line. What is happening with that garden? Is it going away, or is there some agreement?
That I don't know, I have to check that with St. Paul's, I guess, and we can address that on the final plan.
That's fine, yeah, as long as they can address it to this faction of staff for the final, I'm good. I just wanted to note that it is across property use.
Property, okay. Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, thank you very much for your testimony. Any questions, comments, concerns from the board or staff? No? Okay. I saw in the packet, there was a note about items from section twelve, thirteen, or fifteen of the subdivision regs appear to be missing from the application, are we all set with those?
Yes, because they requested waivers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. So, in our packet of info, again, using the findings of fact, it'll be our, the packet of info, the testimony we heard here tonight, and the content that's in your, in your application. We've got a waiver request for the following listed sections of the subdivision regulations, and those are outlined for sections A, well, outlined in A through I for municipal utilities, other utilities, non-municipal utilities, municipal sewer, tabulations, topography, topography, existing vegetation, and wetland delineations. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver requests from the listed sections as outlined below?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the two-lot subdivision at three-ten Pleasant Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent condition one A through E, two, three, four, subsequent conditions one, two, three, and four. Would someone like to make a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, we need to add, under subsequent conditions, if you want.
Yeah, it would be precedent added under one D.
One D, precedent conditions regarding the placement of the.
Address the garden straddling the.
Garden straddling the property lines.
Trying to think of a word, but yeah.
Perfect, so we'll make that into one D as a precedent condition. Precedent condition?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Yeah, they'll want to, they'll want to address it on the, yeah.
The plan.
Either adjust the line around it, or do an easement.
See, it's going away.
Okay, would someone, would that change? Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval for the two-lot subdivision?
I will.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set, thank you. Think you're coming back, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item eight D in our agenda.
Uh, ninety, Richard D.
I'm sorry, ninety.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC, on behalf of Jesse E. Murray Revocable Trust nineteen ninety-one, and Helen B. Murray Revocable Trust nineteen ninety-one, requests approvals for a minor subdivision, a conditionally used permit for drive, driveway separation and number of driveways, and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations for a lot line adjustment between one fifteen River Road and one nineteen River Road in the open space residential district.
Okay, no, no determination of completeness, right?
There is, yes, there is.
There is. Didn't turn my sheet over, sorry. Okay, staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing is open, let's get a quick staff update on this one.
Sure. Staff is, the applicant has requested multiple waivers, a conditionally used permit, and staff is recommending those as well as conditional approval. The applicant's worked back and forth with staff a lot to address a lot of previous comments and things like that, and the, pretty much the comments remaining are to establish easements for access for the shared driveway and very well radius. You'll see that in the precedent conditions.
Okay. Welcome back to the table, if you could, again, state your names for the record? Okay. Welcome back to the table. If you could, again, state your names for the record.
Dan Mullen from Richard Bartlett and Associates. And with me is Grady Cruz, who is the trustee of both the Jesse, Jesse Murray Revocable Trust and Helen B. Murray Revocable Trust. So the story behind this one is they're trying to settle their estate. And the lot lines of the existing residents at 119 River Road went through the greenhouses on the commercial property at 115 River Road. So to rectify that, we have gotten a total of six variances for, three of them for building setbacks, two for pavement setbacks, and one for a reduction of the lot size, because it's impossible to meet that size for the residential lot. And part of the configuration is so that the existing commercial driveway, which ran across the residential lot, will now be on the commercial lot itself, as well as the existing sign that's there. And there was an existing swath of pavement that ran across the frontage of both 115 and 119 that has been there since the 50s. And it used to serve a hatchery building that was there in front of the greenhouses, which burned down several years ago. Part of the use of that pavement is a semicircular driveway for the residential house. And the reason being, if it's not there, and they try to back out the driveway, the grade is such that it's not really very visible coming off River Road, which is already narrow and winding. So it's fairly a blind driveway. So their only option is to back out if the pavement was to be removed. That's part of the reason why we're asking for the conditional use permit. So if it's there and remains, they're able to back out of the garage and head out of the driveway into River Road, and it's further up the road and better visibility. The secondary use of it is because of the narrow and winding River Road, commercial trucks that are bigger have a hard time navigating behind the greenhouses. So they have a place to safely pull off the road and be out of the way and unload and take off without any issue. So the applicant is not proposing to make any changes to any of the sites whatsoever. All they're doing is adjusting the lot lines so they can settle the estate and separately sell the house versus the commercial property.
Okay. We've got a long history of not liking second curb cuts into driveways, but it sounds like there's, there's ample reason to, to need it. There's no alternative to turnaround areas around the property, or?
Because the grade is high in front of the house, and it drops down through the road.
Yeah.
There's no other place to come out of there, except for further north, where they come out now so they can see. If you could come around from Bog Road, they can't see people backing out of that driveway. But they can see them a little further up. So they want to keep that there.
So the new curb cut would be safer?
It's not a new curb cut. It's been there since the 50s.
Oh, okay.
It's an existing condition that they don't want to change.
Okay. Okay. Questions from the board?
On that same thought, my only concern is we're mixing residential and commercial use, because there's a proposal for an easement, is my understanding?
It'll be an access easement for the, for the two lots to kind of overlap.
Correct. So we're having a residential and a commercial use, which are commingling a driveway entrance. I don't have a problem having the second entrance, but is there a way to provide a physical separation, a fence or something, so that they still get the semicircle, but it's separate from the commercial?
Yeah. We, staff and the applicant went back and forth on this a lot. You know, as they stated, nothing is changing. There's no site improvement proposed. It's a existing condition right now. The lot line adjustment changed the frontages for both lots, which changed, you know, what, you know, what each lot was allowed to have for number of driveways. As it, as it is right now, that condition exists. This is cleaning it up. And a big factor was more so, in, you know, my estimation, it's, it's to get those tractor trailers off and having a space for them to maneuver for the commercial use.
I'm just looking at future. Somebody buys that house, doesn't realize or doesn't understand the easement, and all of a sudden, there's a tractor-trail truck parked halfway up their driveway. Because we're allowing it to happen both ways. That's one of my concerns. The second, I see a septic system shown on Lot 119. Is there a separate septic system on 115?
I don't know where that is. Yeah, the answer to that is yes.
So they are separate, so that we don't have to have any easement back and forth?
Totally separate, yeah.
That was, those were my two concerns. I did go to the driveway. I did pull up and try and back out. And I, I can understand the need for the two totally. It's just the use overlap is what concerns me.
Okay. Okay. Other questions from the board? Remember, the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Okay. Close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, Alex, so it's, it's cleaning up what's there now. And again, to Jeff's point on commingling use?
Yeah. The intention is to provide a better structure for the residential use and the commercial use, where right now, the property line cuts through the greenhouses.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions or concerns? Okay. All right. All right. So again, using the information that we've got in our packet as our findings of fact, we've got a few items on the, on the recommendations here. We've got a waiver request, conditional use permit, and subdivision approvals. We'll take those separately. Again, findings of fact will be the material that was presented here tonight, as well as the information in your packet. We've got a slew of waiver requests. Not going to read them all, listed in your packet from A to K. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waiver? No problems with the waiver requests, Alex? Everything's good from staff's perspective?
We recommend approval.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waiver requests as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? So we have a, sorry. So we've got a motion in a second. So I'm going to add some further discussion. So we've got a waiver for municipal sewer, even though there's no sewer available on the site, and municipal water, even though there's no water on the site?
Yeah. I don't think those waivers necessarily were necessary, but they were submitted, so we left them.
Not in the eyes and crossing the t's. All right. So we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. 8.3 is to grant the conditional use permit for Section 28711F, driveway separation alternatives of the zoning ordinance as submitted to allow 119 River Road to maintain two driveways with only 220.82 feet of frontage where 250 is required, and 115 River Road to have three driveways with 279.27 feet of frontage where 400 feet is required. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So, Mr. Chairman, a question. If I was to request that there be a physical barrier between the two, so they can separate commercial and residential, staff, is this where I would mention that? Or is it in conditions?
It's in conditions when you're doing, it would be a condition of approval of the conditional use permit.
Okay. I just note the granting of the waivers. I just, just checking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're voting, or you read in the conditional use permit, so I think we're saying it's now would be a time to condition that CUP on something.
That's what I'm asking. So, yeah.
Yes.
I'm fine with granting so they can have the number of driveways, but I would like to just see some sort of fence or something to separate the two driveways for the uses of the property.
A physical hard delineation?
So there's no need for an easement at that point, for the future land use?
You okay with that?
I'm sorry. I can't hear.
Come on back up for a sec. We're going to open the?
We'd want to make sure, we'd probably want to get some specifics on it, Jeff, what you're thinking. Make sure it doesn't exceed any, it can't be in the site distance triangle, so, or, or, you know, but anything, can't have anything between two and eight feet tall in the site distance triangle.
That's a post and rail. So what I'm basically suggesting is allowing you to keep the driveways, but I?
Just want to open the public hearing back up.
Oh, sorry. I thought you did.
Sorry. No. I said it, but I didn't do it.
Oh, so we're good now?
We're good now. Sorry, Mike. Get up to the mic.
So my, my big concern is the mixing of the residential and the commercial use where the two driveways meet. So what I'm asking is, would you be acceptable if we grant you to keep the number of driveways, but physically put like a post and rail fence at the property line, the new property line, to separate the two driveways, so that there's not commingling of the commercial into the residential? Mostly, this probably isn't as much of an issue now, but if the lot is ever sold, the future owner would now be subject to that easement, which means tractor-trail trucks could be on their property.
The only issue with that is if you put a physical barrier on the property line, the exit out of the property won't be wide enough for a car to turn.
Yeah. I've been the trustee on this now for about eight years. And I've been trying to unravel something that's been in existence for a long, long time. The chances are that that resident will be occupied, anybody by anyone other than a Murray is very, 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 very slim. And right now, the problem is that the residential and commercial use of the property have been so commingled for so long. And that existing business really needs that space. But it, as a matter of fact, when you guys were talking earlier, I can attest to the fact that we've had, over since 1965, we've had two accidents with family members backing out of that driveway onto River Road. To be able to do that turn and to share that area, even with the easement that would be granted, is that my mic?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. An easement that would be granted is actually going to create a bit of a hardship in all of that. And it was the best solution that we could come up with without making drastic changes. And if you put that fence up, and you were pointing out, if we put the fence up, it'll preclude the, that area to be able to have that semicircle driveway for the residents. So, yeah.
Okay. Yep. Trying to get it on.
So I'm looking at that from basically the property line to the edge of the green, which is the little island in the circular, 16 and a half feet. So I'm kind of curious how that precludes a vehicle from using that still as a driveway.
Because of the turning radius coming out.
But the, but the, if you went to the property?
Really pretty, really pretty tight there. It would probably make more sense to just have a, I don't know. I don't have, I don't have an answer for you. It's just been like that forever. It's been, it's currently being used the way it has been used for a long, long time.
Right. And as I say, I'm not necessarily asking to change the ability to use that driveway for the residents. I'm just trying to keep the?
Yeah. So what are you asking, like a split rail fence there?
Yeah, just a split rail fence. If you, if we could, we could say, hold it back, like, say, five feet from the property line, so that it gives you the ability to have the turn radius. But would go from, say, five feet off the property line to the back edge of pavement near the word approximate location. So what are we talking? Maybe 20 feet of fence?
Well, help me understand, help me understand why, why a residential owner would not understand where his property line is, with or without a mark?
Because you're proposing an easement that allows cross access to both, which means a commercial vehicle could then utilize the residential driveway, which at a future date, a new owner may or may not understand. I know you're saying, we'll probably always be a Murray, but we have no way of guaranteeing things like that into the future.
Well, if we made the easement, a one-way easement, not, what I was told, that I thought my understanding was, in order to make it the way it needed to be made, is we had to have reciprocal easement. Now, you're saying we don't have to have a reciprocal?
I don't know about the reciprocal. That's a question for staff.
Well, that was my word.
No, I know what you're saying. And?
I'd say it would be up to the, for your honor, in my opinion, if, if the tractor-trailers needed to be able to nose in here to back up on the, that would be a turning movement thing that would be decided.
It presents a?
Otherwise, it would just be, you know, for the benefit of, you know, 119, you know, crossover.
Is the easement for bene, is it reciprocal? Is it for the benefit of both? Alex?
I believe that was the intent.
I mean, if that's the intent, then that would defeat the purpose of the reciprocal easement if there's something?
Understood. And that's?
So, so you're saying you don't want a reciprocal easement?
Well, I'm concerned with the idea of the reciprocal, because again, we're mixing commercial and residential uses across the property.
Right. Just playing devil's advocate, though. I mean, when they purchase it, they'll see the recorded easement and?
But that, that, yeah. And I guess at that point, they just have no say.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's kind of up to them.
Then the board chooses to vote, and they can just?
Yes. Counselor Todd?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was going to just ask that same question. Whatever happens here, this is going to be recorded as part of the deed for the property. So let's say a non-Murray comes in and wants to purchase it, they're going to be able to see that, that that's, that's part of the issue. And if they don't like it, they have an option to not purchase the property.
Yeah, it will have effect on value. And one other thing I should point out, the activity on that front apron where the hatchery building used to be, I can count on this hand the number of times we need to put a tractor-trailer in there at any given year. Very, very limited use. Looks like there's one in there on the satellite picture.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could the single-family home just have one driveway instead of two?
If, if that was the case, the primary driveway would be right in front of the garage. And that's the one they can't see when they're backing out of the driveway. That's why they?
That driveway is really blind if you back out. It's also blind somewhat to the traffic that's traveling. Even if you were coming out straight, you know, not backing out, you have to be careful, because people travel fairly fast on that 30 mile an hour road. And it's a fairly blind driveway.
Teresa?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure I totally understand how, if this at all impacts emergency services.
Good question.
I mean, when I'm hearing that they're reciprocal, et cetera, I mean, if you ha, if you have to have emergency veh, I'm sure you've looked at this, vehicles in there. I mean, to me, a fire truck's big. Do you need that reciprocal easement? Do you need, need that commingling in order to have success with emergency vehicles?
I, I have not, I mean, if I actually, or if our marshal looked at it, had no comment. I mean, it would be typical for a single-family home to have, you know, not to have that, you know, use driveway.
Second driveway. Okay. Where we go from here, Jeff?
If, if you can keep the motion as is, and I'm probably going to be a nay, just because I think we need to better address it. But I'm not going to, I'm kind of reading the board, and I think I'm the only one. And so I don't want to hold this up.
Is that circular green space? Is that island I heard someone refer to, is that grass? Or what is that? Is it?
There's a little bit of mulch and landscaping in there. There's a tree in it, I believe.
There's a tree?
Oh, I'm sorry. That, yeah, there's a, yeah, that's a little landscaped area. It's mulch and a flowering, a small flowering tree.
Could that be removed? I know I hate to cut down a tree or remove a, a green space. But in order to give each property a little more space, could that be something that can be?
Wow. Yeah. If the answer is, can it be removed? The answer is yes. The answer is, do we want it removed?
Right, right.
That's a different answer.
And does it help? Okay. Any other questions? All right. We'll close the public hearing again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know that we got any farther, but we had a motion and a second on the waiver, or we did the waivers. We had the conditional use permit section is where the question came up, correct?
Right.
Okay. So on the conditional use permit, again, it's fairly cut and dry. There's no options for alternatives and, and different ways to do it. We either do it or don't. So we'll go for granting the conditional use permit for Section 28711 driveway separation alternatives. I've read that into the record. I've read that into the record before. I'll make a motion that we grant that conditional use permit as outlined.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, for the record, one, two nays. Okay, so that motion carries.
Who was the second nay? Dean, okay, so Dean.
Okay. Eight point four is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment between 115 River Road and 119 River Road, submitted, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent condition one, A through D, two through six. Subsequent conditions, one and two. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay for the record.
Just one?
One nay for the record, Jeff, Senator. Okay, that motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on in our agenda to item 9E on the, on the docket tonight. If we could read that into the record.
Novus Group, on behalf of the Roman Catholic Bishop of New Hampshire, Corporation Soul, requests an amendment to a major site plan application, conditionally approved on April 17th, 2024, and signed on November 1st, 2024, for a waiver from Section 24.04 Design Standards for Service Connections of the Site Plan Regulations to install a four-inch sanitary sewer service pipe where a six-inch pipe is required by Section 4.43.13 of the Concord Construction Standards and Details at 60 South Main Street, which is really 67 South State Street in the urban transitional district.
Corporation Soul. Corporation Soul, I don't think I've ever heard that before.
I don't think I have either.
First time for everything. We'll, we'll quiz our lovely representative from Novus Group in just a minute about the Corporation Soul. You might want to buff up, Chris. Okay, no determination completeness, right? No, no determination completeness? Let's get a quick staff update on that, if we could.
Sure. So this is a previously approved site plan, currently under construction. My understanding is that the, they were anticipating a six-inch sewer service, as was shown on the plan, when they got down there and found it is a four-inch sanitary sewer service.
Hate when that happens.
And the, the street is currently under moratorium, and the applicant had provided slow calculations demonstrating the use is less than what a single-family residential home would have been. So staff is supporting the, conditionally supporting the waiver to allow the four-inch sanitary sewer service with the condition, it's spelled out in our reports, but essentially being that if the use ever changes or the sewer, you know, flow ever increases, the entire service will be upsized to be compliant with our standards.
Outstanding. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Thank you. Chris Nato with Novus Group.
You'd be disappointed if I didn't see Chris Nato or Mark Sargent here. That would have thrown me completely off, so, and Ari's in the back, and all, all is good with the world, so. Tell us about the six-inch versus four-inch travesty that you found underground.
Well, first of all, I don't know what a Corporation Soul means, quite honestly, but.
It sounds nice.
Notice that it's spelled.
S O L E. I saw that. That's a typo.
So again, when we did the investigations last year, we thought it was a six-inch pipe, so we're gonna reuse from the existing house that was there. And when they dug it up, they found it was a four-inch sewer service. Again, street's under moratorium, so we can't dig it up. The food pantry actually is gonna use less water than a regular household. It's, they have two small bathrooms and a janitor's sink, so no washer, no dryer, food prep, no shower, so we feel that the four inch is more than sufficient to service the food pantry.
So no food prep?
Yeah.
So it's all prepared food, okay.
Yes.
All right. Questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much, Chris, for your testimony. And again, no issues with staff. Staff has taken the, the right avenue of saying, if the use of the property changes and once the moratorium's out and changes can be made to the.
Not when the moratorium's out.
Not when the moratorium's out. Hey, Chris? And it's only if the use of the property changes, right?
If the, if the use changes or this, if there's an increase in the demand for the service.
How, how is that monitored? The increase? I guess you know how.
They go to the building inspector for a permit for additional.
Does the fact that you planned for upgrades, if things change, change your design at all, or does anything have to be put in place as far as where it's accessed or how you might be able to do anything? Okay.
We'll make sure that, we'll make sure that they stub out a six-inch in case it ever needs to be replaced.
Easy enough?
Should be, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. So again, in our packets here, we've got, using our findings of fact as the information that we've got in our packets, the testimony, the riveting testimony we heard regarding the application and why they need these waivers and amendment approval. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver request for Section 2404 Design Standards for Service Connections of the Site Plan Regulations to allow the use of a four-inch sanitary sewer service for the proposed food pantry building where a six-inch sewer service is normally required? Would someone like to make that, make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I, yes. Your motion did not contain the conditions.
The conditions? Didn't read far enough?
No.
Required per sec, oh, the conditions regarding waivers granted as part of this amendment request are to be noted and fully described in the built schedule, nope, that's it. So what was?
The bottom of eight, two.
Eight, two?
If the use ever changes, the flow ever increases.
I got you. So required under, so again, I got to the normally required piece, blah, 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 with the condition that should the use of the building change or the sanitary sewer flow or demand increase, the entire length of four-inch sanitary sewer service shall be relayed to be compliant with the current city of Concord Code of Construction Standards. Thank you, Alec. Again, would someone like to, did I ask for a motion?
Yeah, I have a que, I know the question, if I could.
Certainly.
I understand the wording of this is basically that the sanitary sewer flow or demand increase. My understanding is that the way the City of Concord calculates that is not by sewer, it calculates by the water use. So it's, it's, it's actually the wa, an increase in water use that would trigger understanding of whether or not there was an increase. So I was just wondering if it should be worded as such to include the term water use or water demand. You can leave the san, the sewer, sanitary sewer in there, but I, otherwise, there's no real way of knowing.
Good question. Don't look for me for an answer, but I'm, it's a good question. I'll look to the left here. I don't know if you guys have that.
Generally, generally, it's, it's the same volume of water, the, the potable water in the sewer is generally the same unless it's a sprinkler system.
Okay.
Well, one more question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
But I don't know that the city has a mechanism by which to calculate the, the amount of sewer. They calculate the amount of water that goes into a person's system, but that, and that's what triggers the rate that you're charged for water and sewer. So for example, that's why if you have a leak somewhere in your house, your bill, your sewer bill goes up. Exactly right, your honor. So, yeah, so that, that's why I think it, I would think would be better to have this provision, be able to have some teeth if you change that to say that it's the water usage that is the triggering mechanism.
Yeah, if that's how we bill for sanitary sewer, you know, usage is, and Pete's correctly wrong, but it can, is typically calc, you know, can be, can be planned out and calculated ahead of time, far before you would ever get that bill, based on the number of bathrooms or sinks, usage like that, that is topulated, and I think that's just trying to, the intent of that is if they increase the facilities, increase bathrooms, add something like that, that would contribute to that.
Right.
Before they get their first bill.
Mr. Chairman, really the trigger is if they try and go to code enforcement or the building inspector and add any facilities that would increase the usage. Because the way you're saying it, my own house, we might have to get a new permit if suddenly I started using more water for whatever reason.
Right.
That's probably not really the trigger we're looking for. We're looking for another bathroom to be installed, suddenly they want a shower, they add a washer and dryer because they want to start washing their own rags. Those are the things, because that would really trigger the sewer demand.
Correct.
So I think it could still be sewer demand. I just don't.
Yeah. And I understand, I understand the, the question. I don't, I'm looking for a way to rejigger the, the condition, should the, should the use of the building change or the sanitary sewer flow slash water increase, the water demand increase? If we put in water demand increase, is that?
I think so, yeah, because, you know, I think what you're saying is correct, but also just, you know, beyond adding a bathroom or a shower or something like that, they could, the use might change.
Yeah.
Just internally within the organization, so that it might increase that.
We okay putting that in? I don't think it changes anything materially.
Sanitary sewer flow or water demand increase?
Yeah, so the sanitary sewer flow or water demand increases. Okay. Okay, so with that change, did I ask for a motion and a second? I think I did.
Then we had some discussion.
And then we had the discussion. So any further discussion?
You may want to have your amendment.
So amendment to grant the wa, who made the, who made the motion to grant the waiver?
Rosenberg and Todd.
Okay. Any changes to that? Do you wish to make a change? You don't, because you're the one who recognized it. Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And eight point three is to grant amendment approval to the previously approved plan, major site plan application for 60 South Main slash 67 South Street, South State, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Planning case twenty, twenty, two, twenty twenty-three, is that dash zero nine seven for changes to the sanitary sewer service and required waiver from the site plan regulations subject to the following conditions, and that's outlined in A, just A, right, A and B, in the, in the conditions. Would someone like to make a motion to grant amendment approval as outlined? So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. And that moves us on to item nine F on our agenda.
Granite Engineering LLC, on behalf of Bradcore Holdings LLC, requests approvals for major site plan review, architectural design review, conditional use permit applications for disturbance to a wetland buffer, and an alternative parking arrangement for the construction of fewer parking spaces than required, and certain waivers from the site plan regulations for construction of an 8,250 square foot addition and accompanying circulation and parking improvements at 391 Loudoun Road in the Gateway Performance District.
Okay. Could we get a staff update on this plan, this project?
Yep, sure. You, you may remember this project from April 17th last year, when it was determined complete. Since that time, the applicant and staff have been going back and forth to provide the plan that's in front of you now. The applicant's proposing a improvements to their, their proposed, one of the conditions will be a voluntary lot merger between the two lots at the end of Break Day Drive. The intent of the plan is to kind of clean up the vehicles. It's gonna benefit the applicant, it's my understanding, but there's also some things that will benefit the city. There's some things that need to be cleaned up for zoning compliance. That was the intent behind this. It's been kind of a few years. The applicant's proposing a phased approach to this. One of the requirements is to, the applicant was initially proposing an expansion to the structure on site. That has been deferred to phase two, along with the reconstruction of Break Day Drive. There, so in phase one is going to include some minor improvements along Loudoun Road, along Break Day Drive, just kind of their driveways, and then a lot of on-site cleanup and prep for any construction that may occur ahead of phase two or with other developments or projects. We are recommending approve, we are recommending conditional approval of the application as well as the waivers and CUPs associated with the project.
Okay. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Sure. Thank you, everyone. My name is Brent Cole with Granite Engineering, to my right, my colleague Jeff Merritt, and the architect of the project, Kirk Lowery, with Lowery Architects. The two owners, Brad and Corey Chapel, are behind me for any specific questions you may have for them. But thank you, thank you, board. The, appreciate everyone's patience. It has been a long road. We received variances back in 2021 for the original project, but we are at the corner of Loudoun Road and Break O'Day. Chapel Tractor owns the facility that used to be EW Sleeper Company. They purchased this property back in 2017. They do very similar to what EW Sleeper did. They sell new and used agricultural equipment, excavators, large equipment, UTVs, and other, other construction-related items. There is an existing 12,000 square foot building on site, and it does have four service bays. The land surrounding the site is largely pavement and gravel. There is a parking lot located to the south, while the rest of the land is mainly gravel. A few years ago, they had the ability to acquire this property here, which is a large reason why we're here tonight. They do plan on merging the two lots and creating the project that we kind of have before you. The plan with the project is to try to reorganize the site, utilizing the vacant land where we can store the outdoor storage. As you can imagine, with excavators, there is big equipment we need to store out there, and we need to do it in a safe and organized manner, and this vacant property allows that. With the ability to store out in this area, we have the opportunity to expand onto the building, which is very much needed. We plan on bringing on six service bays, and one of those bays will be a wash bay, which is important, as you can imagine, in this industry, it is kind of dirty. So having the ability to wash an excavator after you've repaired it or get one ready for sale is important. We do plan on implementing a two-phase approach to this. The first phase will be reorganizing the parking lot itself and utilizing this area for better organization. The second phase is bringing the building into fruition, which comes with the upgrade of Break O'Day Drive. Break O'Day Drive right now is largely their driveway. They plowed Break O'Day. It's never been upgraded before. They utilize it like it's been a driveway because they're the only one out here. It's a pretty sleepy road. So obviously, Break O'Day's enhancement came on board along with this project, so we've deferred that to phase two for right now. One major item with this site is a large increase to the stormwater out here. There's nothing in regards to stormwater on site today. Everything gets shipped off, kind of into this wetland around here. We are bringing on a large infiltration pond down in this corner. We have new rain gardens going in where the parking is, and the impervious area associated with this area here gets brought to that infiltration pond that we're bringing on site. With the increase in stormwater, does come with a conditional use permit for a wetland buffer impact. The wetland buffer, largely in this area, and I'll just flip to the next sheet, largely the area in orange here is already impacted today, and it's been impacted prior to the implementation of a wetland buffer. We plan on trying to restore that as much as possible. The area in green is the area being stored, but mainly, we're pulling the gravel back out of the buffer. We're just leaving grass to be, grass where there's grading to actually get down to the wetland. The blue areas are the areas of new buffer impacts, and those are because of the stormwater. As you can imagine, the stormwater is gonna be closer to the wetland. The wetland happens to be the low spot of the site. So in order for us to be able to discharge, we do have to get into the wetland buffer a little bit. We have gone to the Conservation Commission. They did recommend approval of the wetland buffer impact. They just requested that any plantings be a native planting. The second conditional use permit that we have is related to parking. With the new service bays, we are required to have forty-six parking spaces. We don't need forty-six parking spaces for this type of use. We only need roughly about thirty-three, which leaves thirteen spaces to be planned for in the future if we need them. So we are requesting a reduction in parking through a conditional use permit to allow the thirty-three spaces that we need and thirteen future spaces if we ever need them. There are a few waivers associated with this project. Some are due to the non-conformities. As you can imagine, it's, it predates zoning in a lot of regard. The first one is the. Um, the first one is the width of this driveway here. It's currently seventy feet wide. We're bringing it back down to fifty-eight, but we do need it to be that wide in order to get trucks in and out of the site. Um, so we are requesting a waiver for your driveway widths. And the last series of waivers are really related to Break a Day Drive. As I mentioned, Break a Day, it came as kind of a shock to us, um, and which is probably why we haven't been here since April of, of last year. Uh, it's a major upgrade and in this district, um, it is required to be thirty-four feet wide with sidewalks on both sides. Break a Day serves one tenant. It is not a major arterial, but it would be required to be designed to a major arterial road standard. We have worked with city. Um, I think we've worked fairly well to kind of come up with a compromise. Uh, the first compromise is pushing it to phase two, um, so we can get the site in compliance. And then when we wanted to pull a building permit with, uh, the expansion, we would have to build the Break a Day upgrade. But we've reduced the width down to twenty-four feet wide. Uh, we've agreed to a sidewalk on one side, which extends on this side here, which is actually the frontage that we control. Um, instead of putting a sidewalk on the vantage that we don't control, we feel it, it makes sense that if someone builds across the street, maybe if they build a casino or something, that they would own the sidewalk on that side. Uh, there is a few other waivers associated with the dimensional requirements, uh, for the Break a Day Drive. That kind of touches the main points. So we do have a few waivers. We have a few conditional use permits. We've received all of our state permits. Uh, Kurt went to the ARDC and got the architectural plans approved, um, in which there are a few renderings in your packet. They are a little outdated at this point. Um, these are what we presented to the, um, the zoning board, but they, they look nice. It's a big improvement to the site. Uh, I think it needs it. I think the chapels think it needs it, um, and, and we're excited to kind of get this project a little forward. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll hand it back to you.
Great. What, what of the existing property stays or existing buildings stay?
All the existing buildings stay.
Just refacing them and that's phase two?
Don't, we're not proposing any refacing.
Okay.
Just the expansion to the north.
Okay. Jeff, I think you got some questions.
Yeah, I, I do. Um, if you could go site plan phase one.
Sure.
Please, uh, by the building lot, yeah, the first sheet, sorry, five of thirty-eight. So I'm kind of curious. I see snow storage shown on the site way over by the parking lot.
Yep.
But I don't see any snow storage from basically the building kind of where the first bay is all the way over to the wetland.
We can show more snow storage on the site. There's plenty of lands.
Right, but the thing is, is you can't store snow in a buffer. And right now, that's what's been happening for the, I've been watching the site for the last year since you first applied. And I'm concerned that if you just put grass there and it's flat, that it's going to continue to happen, that it's just going to continue. I know I had submitted some comments back, I don't know if it was September, November, October, whenever, to Alex about, you have on your landscape plant some trees through there. Is it possible to actually create a berm there and have the water kind of come back out to, toward the property line and go around in kind of a treatment swale so that snow can't be pushed right up into that buffer right into the wetland? Because you're proposing that area to be gravel. And every time it's plowed or regraded because the excavators tear it up, that silt all goes right over toward that wetland. And that's what's been degradating it over the last several years. So that's one comment I have. A second is, I'm still concerned this, that section of the driveway slopes toward Loudoun Road and you still have two catch basins that are on Loudoun Road that are seeing a significant amount of silt. I went out there this weekend and the one on the right-hand side of that driveway, as we look at it, is actually completely covered over with silt and sand from plowing of the driveway and whatnot. And those are cities in the cities right away. So if we can't somehow put a second set of basins that's on your site that you're having deep sumps in, that you're collecting the silt, so the city's not responsible for that, or else there's going to have to be, in my opinion, some sort of O and M type agreement where you're responsible for cleaning those structures out, you know, spring, fall, whatever. Um, because that is a concern because now it clogs the downstream system for the city. On the second site plan, you, if you go to the next sheet, your existing kind of disturbed area was probably when this was surveyed several years ago and that area has now expanded. That area is much closer to the utility lines that lie across the property line on the bottom of this plan. And I'm just curious if you're actually going to restore all that area that's now disturbed and has equipment stored on it and putting it back to some sort of vegetated state to match the existing condition, I mean, match current condition to this proposed plan and not just leave the existing condition as is. I noticed on that side of the site, your snow storage is all going to be kind of in the northern section, but everything slopes all the way down to the south. So meaning when your snow melts, it's going to drain all your snow melt rainwater all the way across that gravel parking area to your proposed detention pond. So if that is the intent, then I think, again, we need some sort of O and M manual maintenance agreement that you're going to go out and keep track of your sediment four bays in that stormwater treatment area and clean them routinely so that they don't get silted up and now push silt into the wetland area. Sorry, I'm just kind of kind of scroll through. I noticed that you provided turning templates for the fire truck, but you showed the fire truck template cutting across your display area in the front of the lot. Well, if you've got excavators and skid steers and everything else in the front of the lot, there's no way that fire truck's making it in the way you show it. And I know the fire department maybe didn't make comments, but I don't know if they actually saw that. I also note that you did not provide any sort of truck turning templates, but you mentioned this evening that the need for the fifty-eight foot driveway back there was for trucks exiting the site. Lowboys are pretty good size and that's probably what you're bringing in to, to unload. I just want to make sure we're not going to see lowboys unloading equipment on Break a Day Drive. They need to be shown on site plan. Mr. Chairman, I'll let someone else ask questions.
That's good.
I'm going to kind of scroll through here to see if I had others. I do see you have in phase two, um, behind the bay nine and ten, you kind of have a riprap swale that goes down. I'm just kind of curious how that's going to work in the winter because I have a funny feeling that's where snow is going to get plowed. So I'm wondering how is drainage actually going to get off the lot and into the riprap area? I think that really was the bulk. It was a lot of the drainage just because you're proposing a gravel parking area where we traditionally see paved parking and trying to just control that siltation because that wetland's already been impacted for a lot of years. And I understand a lot of it was before the chapels took the property. But if we have a chance to kind of fix it, not ma, or not maybe not fix it, but you're restoring some buffered areas, but try and prevent future damage, that would really, I mean, be, you know, an improvement. The only last question I had, and this is more for staff. So we have an approved plan for the site across the street that showed an improvement to breakaway drive, break a day, excuse me. Does this proposal match what the other proposal had for improvements on break a day?
There's some sidewalk, um.
The width, the profile, the cross-sections, all that? Because what I'm wondering is if now, since we have an approved site plan across the street that included an improvement, if that applicant or another applicant takes the property and comes forward with the same plan, are they going to now have to rebuild Break a Day another time to meet that original approval?
Yes, well, my understanding is there's a conditionally approved site plan for across the street, which may or may not be developed, you know, by any possible use. The, the idea here is that there's, you know, the, this proposal here meets the, the needs of our current standards. Uh, the, the width may not, there could be other improvements depending on the type of development that goes in across the street. They are both utilizing the same street detail, um, to meet that standard. Um, and then should any project at any point, if should one gets developed before the other, uh, or for example, if this becomes approved, something else comes in across the street, they have to widen, redesign, and then they want to move forward with phase two and it no longer aligns with the condition of Break a Day Drive, they would have to come back for the planning board for an amendment to their previously approved site plan. And we also thought that would be perhaps the best mechanism.
Okay.
Not knowing what exactly it, you know, could happen.
As long as you've thought it out, I was just kind of my, I assumed you did, but I just wanted to kind of hear the process because I just want to make sure we don't suddenly end up with another applicant coming in and saying, hey, this is different. I now long can't build mine without having to rebuild. And I just want to make sure we kind of looked at that. But as long as there is a process to move forward, I'm, I'm fine with that. Thank you, Alec.
Questions from the board? So before I ask for public testimony, I just want to give you a chance to, to respond on any of Jeff's points regarding snow, regarding drainage, regarding the silt.
We received a lot of Mr. Santa Cruz's comments, um, prior to the meeting. We did write a response to those comments, um, so they're, they're already in your packet. I can try to reiterate them. I'll go through as many as possible. He, I believe, you know, he probably had three or four times that amount and we, we tried to accommodate as many as you.
And you did, you did a majority of my compliment, you.
Um, we will obviously show more snow storage and we won't show snow storage in the area of the buffer. Um, we did disagree a little bit on the philosophy behind the berm. I don't necessarily think a berm necessarily helps in this situation. We do plantings, trees, um, that will guard from future plowing of snow into that buffer. We've significantly removed gravel back. Um, it will be grass, it will be plantings. Plantings aren't cheap. I can't imagine why you would want to just mow them over with a plow, but if they were to, I don't think a swale or a small berm is necessarily going to help. What we're trying to do is not necessarily concentrate the stormwater and discharge it to the, to the wetland. AOT actually thinks that a buffer, um, actually is a good source of treatment. So any water that does head in this direction, we're trying to allow sheet flow and flow through the buffer instead of concentrating it in a treatment swale, which really wouldn't be a treatment swale. We can't get the length or the width that we need. Um, so it'd be a glorified ditch, which we just don't feel like is great for discharging silt before the, um, before the actual wetland. We think an actual buffer there is more important. Um, the silt in the catch basin, we have extended the pavement per, um, Peter's requests out in this area. We've actually paved more of this area through here. There's a small amount of gravel. Um, I can't imagine why that would be continuing to increase gravel out here. It could be from the, the sanding of the roads in the wintertime, um, but I don't think we necessarily own the maintenance of the city catch basins. It hasn't come up in staff's report yet. Um, I, I don't think it's, it's not a concern to us. Um, I guess it would be like interested to hear what staff has to say. Um, there are, there may be disturbed areas. Um, gravel does have an opportunity to wander sometimes. We will restore the gravel back to the limits that we have on this plan. Um, it's actually associated with variance that we got as well. Um, so we will bring the limits if they've wandered a little bit back to what are shown on this plan. Let's see, the fire truck, um, I can try to take you to that sheet. There's plenty of space for a fire truck, uh, and we've actually got more space now too. Uh, we're going to open up this whole area. Uh, we do have a new driveway. We worked with the city to provide this kind of awkward looking turnaround, which gives us a driveway here. So we could come around more, um, come back this way, bring it in through here. I do understand what we're saying about some, you know, the ability to park an excavator here, which would prevent a fire truck being able to come in. They almost have three sixty access just being on the public road. I don't know why they would want to be so close to a burning building anyways. Um, but they, they have Loudoun Road, they have a beautiful, brand-new Break a Day Drive. I can't imagine why they'd want to mosey through the site, but, uh, we can look at trying to trim up those lines and tighten up the, the paths. Let's see, snow storage, um, O and M manuals. AOT does require an, uh, operation and maintenance manual with all the stormwater out here. We will have annual inspections on these sediment four bays as well as the infiltration ponds. Catch basins, we do have, we will have to maintain those. And we do have a, two rain gardens. One is specifically right in front of that area of the catch basin that's being in question in the right of way. Uh, so we do have multiple maintenance practices that will have to be maintained on an annual basis. Think I hit everything?
About the, uh, unloading and loading of the trucks.
Unloading and loading is a condition of the, um, the permit. Um, it, it will not be allowed to happen on Break a Day anymore. As I mentioned before, Break a Day has been their driveway.
Yep.
They plow it. It's never, never been maintained by the city. It was actually questioned three years ago. The city wanted us to discontinue it, um, and just have it be our driveway. Um, but it's not, it, the chain of title got confusing and unfortunately it, it went away, which is unfortunate for everyone in, in the play here. But it was their driveway, they unloaded on it, they know that they can't anymore.
Chairman, just hold. So with that said, how are you proposing to bring track trail truck, lowboys in here and unload? Because you didn't provide a plan showing that.
Through Break a Day.
So they can make the rights in and the lefts in. You've shown that because the other developer, we had asked to make sure it was shown in case there was any corner widening or anything. And I don't know if that was part of your phase two plan to show it.
There's a lot of land out here. We, we can show it if we need to. I, I don't think it's necessary, but we can show up a plan, um, plenty of land to be able to turn around. They, they use this land to turn around today. They may, they may unload on Break a Day.
Turn right or left from Loudoun Road or to turn right or left out of Break a Day on to Loudoun Road. That's where I'm concerned. I didn't agree, you have plenty of room out back. Once, if you're going to come in, go breakaway, pull out into your site, I'm worried the intersection, do you have enough room to make your turns in?
They do that today.
So they'll come off of three ninety-three, head it south and turn right on Break a Day?
Correct.
I guess what I'm saying, I'm going to make a formal request as part of this. You provide those to staff for review, please.
Provide what?
Truck turning templates going in and out of Break a Day Drive showing lefts in, rights in, lefts out, rights out.
Just hold on to that thought for when we get there, if we get there. Okay, other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Okay, anything else from staff?
Uh, no, one thing I failed to mention, it's in the conditions, but, um, so sidewalks are required inside the urban growth boundary. Uh, as you see, the applicant's proposed a portion of them along Loudoun Road and Break a Day Drive. Similar to, um, and we are requiring the applicant for the remainder of their frontage where they are not providing those sidewalks to pay a fee in lieu, and we're recommending that, that the planning board.
Pay it. Pay in lieu?
Yep.
Is that part of the conditions?
Yes, it's in the conditions. It's its own condition prior to your conditional approval. Um, and, and, you know, there's a lot of drainage easements and video of the stormwater that runs into the building. You guys were okay and understood that all kind of how that laid out.
Yeah.
That was a yes?
And I'll need to circle back to a lot of Jeff's comments and make sure we get the wording that we want. I have a few notes, but it's not polished.
Is there enough to move forward or how do you want to proceed? Is the staff comfortable moving forward?
Staff was comfortable with our recommendation prior and will work to get staff. Jeff's comments, I don't know if you want any more interaction with the applicant during the public hearing or anyone from the audience.
Good? Okay.
Do you mind if I just ask one question?
Sure.
About the sidewalks? How, how much in lieu or how, what's the length of sidewalk that you're requiring? Is it, is it on the other side of Break a Day too, or is it just the in lieu fee for the remaining part of Break a Day on our frontage?
It would be along your legal frontage.
Okay.
Areas that you're not providing.
Okay.
Break a Day or on Loudoun?
And Loudoun.
And, yeah, on Loudoun to, to this point here.
In my recommendation, I think I provided an estimated linear foot for that to give you some kind of understanding.
I thought it was to the second driveway on Loudoun.
It says a hundred and sixty feet on Loudoun Road.
In the back, and so it's the, from the back dri, the second driveway on Break a Day to the Hammerhead or whatever the hell that's called on the, excuse me. It's not a hammer, it's like a snake head, I guess. I'm used to saying Hammerhead, but that's not really a Hammerhead.
Turnaround.
Is that, to the turnaround. Let's call it a turnaround. That's where we're, that's where it's. it's proposed.
I believe, I believe so.
All right. Okay, comfortable there? Well, comfortable, but explained. Okay, anything else before we close the public hearing? No? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Any other comments, questions, concerns on the board, from the board? Jeff, you're comfortable? I know you had a lot of questions on the.
No, I mean, I think we addressed some of these and precedent.
Again, I want to make sure that, that, you know, they're on their, their property, they're not parking rigs on the buffers, they're not encroaching on wetlands, they're, anything's an improvement over what's there now, so.
Agreed, just, and.
It's not a, not a great welcome to that end of the city, so. It looks beautiful, so it looks like it will be nice. Okay, so, that said. These reports are getting longer and longer. Scroll through them. Okay, so again, our findings of fact is the information that we've had in our packet here tonight, plan sets that were provided, the information given to us in the public testimony from the applicant. We'll use those as our findings of fact to move forward. Okay, so based on that, we have a couple of things to do here. We've got architectural design review approval as submitted. Would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design review as submitted? I'll make that motion.
Second.
And we've got a hesitant second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.3 is to grant the waiver request below from the listed sections of the site plan regulations using a criteria of RSA 67444-3E2 and Section 3608 of the Site Plan Regulations. Those are outlined in A, B, A and B in your packets. Would someone like to make a motion to grant waiver requests as outlined?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.4 is to grant the conditional use permit in accordance with Article 28711B, construction of fewer parking spaces, of the zoning ordinance allowed for the construction of only 33 required, 33 of the required 46 spaces, with the understanding that 13 unbuilt spaces will be constructed per plan and Concord Construction Standards and Details if and when deemed necessary by the property owner or the city of Concord, without requiring additional review or approvals. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.5 is to grant the conditional use permit in accordance with Article 2843D, construction use permits required for certain disturbance of wetland buffers and zoning ordinance to allow disturbance of wetland buffers for the construction of a driveway and construction of stormwater system to discharge to low points of the site with the condition that the disturbed wetland buffer be restored with native plantings. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined? So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.6 require the applicant per Section 2102, sidewalks required to set aside equivalent funds to be placed in a city escrow account instead of constructing the required sidewalk in the following frontage locations along break-o-day Drive, subject to their, between their second eastern driveway and the turnaround approximately 300 feet, and between their two driveways along Loudon Road approximately 160 feet. Prior to final approval of the site plan, a cost estimate should be prepared and submitted to the city engineer and clerk of the board for approval. Upon approval, all funds and associated with the payments in lieu of construction shall be provided to the city prior to final approval. All other required sidewalks shall be installed as shown on the approved site plans in accordance with the Site Plan Regulations and Concord Construction Standards and Detail. Would someone like to make a motion to require the applicant to pay in lieu for sidewalks as so eloquently outlined there by the chair?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Grant, 8.7 in your packet is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of a phased construction of an 8,250 square foot addition and associated improvements subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. And those are outlined in precedent conditions 1A through C, 2A through G, 3 through 12, and subsequent conditions 1 through 15. Any other subsequent or precedent condition additions that we need to make?
Yes, I think we, you know, if, if you wanted to add more precedent conditions, I recommend you add them after 1C. I have, let, let me know. I have a note, a potential 1D, a note shall be added to the site plan and erosion control plans stating that all previously disturbed areas outside of the proposed storage areas shall be revegetated and restored with native seed mixes.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
I have additional, 1E, additional snow storage areas shall be located on-site outside of wetland buffers. I don't mention anything about berms or anything like that.
That's fine. I'm good, I'm okay with that.
I have 1F, a turning plan shall be provided which demonstrates proper truck turning movements specific for trailers required for loading and unloading of large commercial vehicles, showing left-in, left-outs, right-in and right-out movements at the break-of-day and Loudon Road intersection.
Yep.
So with that?
To, for review and approval, or to the acceptance of the staff.
Staff. Okay, so for the record, again, those following along at home, that's precedent conditions 1A, B, and C, with the addition of D, E, and F as outlined by Alec.
Was I missing anything else?
I don't think so. I had those listed. I, I, the silt issue still bothers me, but I think that's probably a city issue that can be resolved without us sticking our nose in it.
Oh, the catch basins?
Catch basins.
If it becomes a problem, I'm sure we're going to hear about it from general services.
Okay. I didn't ask, and I apologize. Any lighting changes to the site? Yes? They're in the plan, right?
Yeah, they're good.
Okay, I looked through those. Okay, anything else, Alec? Nope?
I don't think so.
All right, so we've got, we've got all of that right into the record. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
You missed it, Jeff.
Got in there.
Got in there. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Good luck. All right, 827, that's it. We're done for the night. Motion to adjourn? All right, let's, let's read the next one into the record, if we could read item 9G into the record.
Novus Group, on behalf of SARP Realty LLC, request approvals for minor site plan review and certain waivers from the site plan regulations for a 2,598 square foot addition to the south side of the existing Red Blazer Restaurant Building at 72 Manchester Street in the, in the highway commercial district.
In the highway commercial district. That's a highway commercial district on Manchester Street.
Okay.
All the way down the hill?
Most of it is, yeah.
Okay, let's, no determination completeness on this. Let's get a quick staff update, if we could.
No, isn't there a determination?
There is a determination.
There is, I'm sorry.
Yes.
9G, I apologize. 9G, staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing is open. Welcome to, actually, let's get a staff update on this.
Sure. This application has come to you a few times, been continued at the request of the applicant. Staff is recommending, you just determined to complete, yes. The staff is recommending the planning board or the applicant request to continue this application to the May meeting. We think that there are, staff has some recommendations that we think will, could impact the flow and site layout, particularly to parking, site flow, that should be resolved prior to the planning board, you know.
May meeting or April meeting?
Well, we can go through that, but we think that there's, there's some, some issues that, depending on how they're resolved, could, could change the layout of the site in a way that the planning board, you know, would want to see before taking action on the application. In this, there's also staff is, there's a recommended condition, I'm sure that I'll let their team talk more about, but in this, Manchester Street is scheduled in fiscal year 27 to be reconstructed. There has been funding associated already this year to start some of those actions underway. Part of this is requiring right-of-way, and so it's a longstanding history, especially along this corridor, as site plans come through, that is part of our, you know, the planning board takes the right of way necessary for that. When we get there, we have more to say, but we'll wait until that's kind of the topic of conversation, I believe.
Okay. Okeydoke. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Chris Netto with Novus Group.
Ari Pollock.
Gallagher.
Kelly.
And Gartr.
Well, tell us about this project.
Sure. So, so basically, the project is a small addition of the back of house of the restaurant. It's a small square on the backside of the main restaurant, as you can see. It's a 970 square foot footprint, three stories, so it's totaled about 2,600 square feet. Again, it's back of house, no new seating, no new customer area. It's basically, first floor is bakery storage, second floor is a new refrigerator unit, and the third floor is office space. So it's really just to improve the efficiency of the restaurant, to service the customers. So that has turned into a little bit more than that since we've, since we've submitted the application. And Ari and I are here to make a case for the board considering a conditional approval tonight, actually. So, here we go. I think the first Alec mentioned was, was related to site speculation and parking. We're fine with the conditions that, that staff has recommended and the suggestions that they've made to improve the site. So we're comfortable working through those with staff and, and, you know, feel like those could be made a condition of approval to work through with staff. The second is, as you've been made aware, there's been some work done on the adjacent parcel just to the south at Five Garvins Falls, which is the house abutting to the south that is residence that was purchased by the applicant. They did go in and instruct a driveway and some gravel parking area back there against our suggestions. And, you know, it's our position that that really should be treated as a separate application. I think, I think we should, we could recommend stopping any use of that until we come before the board with a proper application to, if they desire, add a parking lot for the restaurant and merge the two lots together. I think that would be the most appropriate action to move forward. And then the second item, more importantly, relates to the, the easement for the widening of Manchester Street. And I'll turn that over to Ari to talk about.
Thanks, Chris. And if I could, before we take questions, I mean, interrupt if you have something pressing, but I wanted to get all the issues out on the table. First, I'll say, this must be the smallest project I've ever appeared before the planning board for. 900 square foot addition on the back of a restaurant building. Over the three floors, we're talking about 2,600 square feet. So it, it very much is under the category of much to do about nothing, and we get into why. We are in receipt of the staff report that was in your packets. We got it Friday at 4:00 PM. Done our best to digest 17 pages of information in two and a half business days. As you're aware, this comes before you as a minor site plan approval application. As Chris mentioned, it's back of the house addition to the rear of the Red Blazer. There are no customer seats or tables associated with this expansion. There are no additional diners who will be able to be accommodated as a result of this expansion. As I said, it's a 900 square foot increase in footprint over three levels on a site that is two and a half acres where restaurants are in allowed use. The site improvement will add, as Chris mentioned, management offices, staff bathrooms, space for the cooler freezer, and some new bakery space. These are all backroom functions. Customers won't see a difference. They'll use the same entrance, they'll sit at the same tables, they'll order off the same menu, and they'll leave the same way they came in. Based on these facts, we actually needed to apply to the ZBA for a variance because we were adding square footage to the building, but we were not adding parking demand. And so we asked if we would, could be excused from adding additional parking spaces because the areas we were adding would not be adding load for customers into the building. We were successful. We received a variance, and the variance allows us to rely on the same parking count as exists today. We reconfigured it a bit to fit the 900 square foot expansion, but the number of spaces does not need to be expanded. Thank you, zoning board. As anyone who's visited this restaurant knows implicitly, parking is at a premium out there, and the lot is often full with folks that are coming to eat privately or attend a function. And it seems like every one of them is coming in with a full-sized pickup truck. The staff report recommends that the board table this application and essentially take a two-month timeout. You might wonder why, and what are we going to do in two months that we couldn't have done in the last eight months, or couldn't accomplish tonight? The reason is that the applicant is being asked to comply with the requirement to donate, dedicate is the word in the memo, but it's really donate or give away, right-of-way for the widening, the long-awaited widening of Manchester Street. The report explains the history here that the widening's been included in the city's capital improvements plan since the 1990s. Ton of discussion, a ton of designs, CIPs, budgeting, more planning. 30 years later, the road actually hasn't been widened, but we've had a long conversation about it being necessary, and we don't have any issue with that capital improvements project, or what it will do for that corridor and those who use it and are owning land along it. Meanwhile, the staff is requiring a 12-foot easement along Manchester Street as a quid pro quo for a 900-square-foot footprint expansion on the back of the building, the farthest part of the building from this road. Staff points out that the requirement, it, well, one, that it's a longstanding practice of the city to exact right-of-way from applicants in front of the planning board, and that it's similar to the demands that were made of Bank Chevy and Gripeni Mazda when they did their projects up the road. Well, as this board will recall, those were significant redevelopment projects of substantial commercial, retail, and industrial uses. They have nothing in common with a 900-foot bump out on the back of a restaurant, where the ZBA has explained we don't need more parking. Staff points out that there was a prior site plan approval from 2002, so that the Blazer could expand at that time. It did expand at that time. And that approval included an easement requirement, dedication, donation, and that the donation was never conveyed. Well, it's true, it was never conveyed, but as you might suspect, there's more to that story. The 2002 site plan approval was for, as I said, a significant expansion. You have some photos of the before and after in the staff memo. We don't dispute any of that, it's all true. The, the planning approval came with a condition to convey a six-foot easement along Manchester Street. And just as now, the story then was, the city's getting ready to widen this road, so we need some space, and so we need six feet. After the approval, staff decided six feet wasn't enough, and that really they needed 10 feet. There was no return to the planning board, there was no amendment to the approval, there was no resolution to this disconnect. Six became 10. 25 years went by, no easement was conveyed, and here we are. Twenty five years went by, no easement was conveyed and here we are with a requirement from the staff for a nine hundred square foot expansion that not six feet, not ten feet, but really we need twelve feet. What does twelve feet look like? Well, oh, thank you, Mary. Or whoever, maybe somebody did that. You did it. Good work. That is a graphic that I had Novus put together. It shows the six foot right of way dedication in green. And then the additional six foot requirement under the present application in red. There is that little bulb on the left end there where the Garvins Falls corner requires some additional area. But you'll see, obviously, six plus six is twelve. It's twice as much as what was required before. The the widening is significant because it pushes critically important parking to the back of the site. It doesn't just take the front of those spaces. It pushes everything like if you were to push on a balloon on one end, it punches out on the other. And the parking islands and the configuration, everything gets moved backwards. The travel ways, the drive aisles, a complete reconfiguration. And all for six more feet and a project that's been on the design table for thirty years. Our point is not that the city doesn't deserve or want or need this road expansion. Our point is that a twelve foot dedication of easement doesn't have any relationship or nexus with a nine hundred square foot bump out on the back of a restaurant that adds no tables and needs no new parking. It's just simply apples and oranges. They don't connect. So what should happen? The applicant should make good on the original six foot dedication. We should have done it then. We should do it now. Our client is willing to do so. But we shouldn't be asked for more and what doesn't connect with what is currently before the planning board. It amounts to a taking and we won't do it. We would rather cancel the project than provide a taking without compensation. So what we're asking for tonight is for the board to not take a two month timeout that won't advance the ball, but to grant a condition of conditional approval with the conditions that are laid out in the staff's report. But with modification of condition number three, where it talks about a twelve foot right of way along Manchester Street and make that a six foot right of way along Manchester Street. Right size it to the two thousand and two site plan approval. Hold us to those conditions, but not expand upon it for a current project that has no nexus to the requirement. Your question might be, and the board do that? Or is the board allowed to just modify the staff report or decide to require something different? The second handout, the front page is the cover sheet from the regulations, the second is excerpt from the regulations. Section thirty two point oh four of the regulations, future streets. It states that where the, where an adopted capital improvements plan item indicates plans for realignment or widening of a road that would require some land within the site plan, the board may require the applicant to dedicate such areas for widening or realignment. The discretion rests with this board. It may. It may decide that it has enough of a connection with a nine hundred square foot expansion that a twelve foot dedication is a rational and reasonable and just requirement. Or it may conclude, now, the six foot should have happened long ago, will require six feet, but not more than it because the board will understand that that additional six feet puts the whole parking configuration into tilt. It requires a complete redesign, repaving, re landscaping, restriping, reorientation of the parking islands. And it's just not relevant and rational to ask the applicant to incur those expenses and that level of dedication. What if the city really needs twelve feet? What if six feet just won't do it? Well, that's the case that any other land owner along that strip may find themselves in. If they're not coming before the planning board for some new project or renovation or addition. Just simply the city knocks on the door and says, we need another six feet. And the landowner either says, sure, or you gotta pay me. And that's what eminent domain and just compensation is all about. It happens or is at least a factor in the background of every capital improvement project where existing right of ways are not of adequate dimension. And, and I don't know whether it can or is necessary on this case, in, in, on this occasion or not. I'd like to think that the city could take a hard look at the capital improvements design that again, started at six feet, went to ten feet, now twelve feet, and find a way to make six feet work. And I don't know that they can or can't. I just know that it shouldn't be related to this particular pending application because it's beyond the scope of work that's proposed. So again, to be clear, we're asking that the board not take a timeout. Grant the waivers that staff, I believe, has indicated they would support. Grant minor site plan approval with all of the conditions that are stated in the memo. And some of them are onerous and will take some serious work. But modify the one, it happens to be number three, so that it, instead of reading twelve feet along Manchester Street and twenty feet along the corner of Garvins Falls Road, it would read six feet along Manchester Street. And again, we're not saying the city shouldn't or wouldn't need this right of way. We're just saying it doesn't relate to this project. Thank you very much for listening.
No matter how many times you say it though, I mean, the nine hundred square foot addition, it's very small. It's back of the house. It's no seating. It's no whatever. You open the door with the change and, and you know as well as anybody else, as soon as you open the door for the change, there's, there's opportunity to go in and clean things up. There's opportunities to go in and say, this is what's going to happen going forward because these are the new standards. This is how we do it and whatnot. So I can appreciate, I can appreciate the fact that it is a, a small addition and it doesn't really play in the big picture of things and tidy, parking is tight and, and it doesn't affect parking because there's no parking in that spot that's behind there now anyways. It's just a alleyway with all kinds of crap and, and stuff sitting behind it. But, you know, it, the, the, the aspect of this to open these up, to make changes, allows for things to be done and allows for things to, 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 to be cleaned up, if you will, whether they were done correctly or not in twenty twenty or two, two thousand and two or, or not. I don't know, but you know, I, I take umbrage with the, with the quid pro quo aspect of it. It doesn't, you know, the city's looking out for their best interest. And if they're saying they need twelve feet, I'm going to say, okay, well, that's, you know, that's great. Again, knowing that it's been on the plate for thirty years and, and nothing's happened, now it's on the deck for twenty twenty seven, does that change? I, I don't know that it does. And I, I don't, I don't think that, you know, that's a, you know, an unreasonable ask from your perspective is leave it at six feet. I don't think it's an unreasonable ask from the city's perspective to say, we're going to need twelve feet because things are happening up in the heights, things are happening for sewer. We're going to need to change this. We're going to need to change that. Regulations have changed for the underground and whatnot. So I don't know that. And if I'm getting information from staff that says this is, this isn't ready to go yet. This isn't ready for prime time and we're recommending a, a delay. I take that as, as not gospel, but I take it, you're going to have to do some, you're going to do some work here to, to get us to the point where, where we're comfortable saying move forward with staff saying they need, they need more time to look at it.
Fair enough. We're here to do the work.
Okay.
The regulation opens the question and certainly puts forward what you're explaining to be the case, which is when you file an application, you open this door. However, the regulation is very clear that it's may and not shall.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's our opinion as the applicant's team that what, what is being requested, required, twelve feet, does not have any relationship to the addition that's proposed on the building. And therefore, the board should exercise its discretion to say the other elements of this expansion obviously need to be planned and managed. And that's what all the rest of the conditions relate to. However, it has nothing to do with the width of Manchester Street and how many vehicles are coming and going from this property or that street.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's our, our posi-, you know, when, when, when you say, you know, convince us, do the, you know,
Yeah, yeah, no.
Our, our argument is simply that one thing doesn't have anything to do with the other. We're not saying the city doesn't need twelve feet to expand this road. We're just saying get it the proper way, which would be to ask for it without a quid pro quo hanging over our head. And demonstrate that it's necessary as opposed to just, well, we thought six, then we thought ten, now we think twelve.
Any negotiation room on the six to ten to twelve? I mean, is there a happy medium for you to feel happy, the applicant to feel happy?
I mean, I think there's always room for that, but honestly.
I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking the question.
The honest answer is that when, when we received the memo on Friday at four P M, it was not phrased as come talk to us. It was phrased as we need a twelve foot dedication and we're recommending that, you know, we take a two month timeout so that we can extract it from you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I could just for a second. I have a slightly different interpretation of that second quote. Because it's saying we may require the applicant to dedicate such areas for widening as shown on the master plan or C I P. I don't know that the board really has the ability to say, we can require less than what is shown on the C I P plans. I think it's a, we either ask for the full area, we ask for nothing.
Right.
I don't think we can sit here.
And say six feet's okay or eight feet's okay.
The two month gap would allow engineering to look again at the plans with their consultant, the applicant to look and see if there's a middle ground. But I don't think we, right now, the way I read this, would have the ability to negotiate here tonight to change the width.
Yep.
We're, we're not saying six feet is enough. We're saying six feet is our offer.
I understand, but I don't know that we have the right. If the plans show twelve, this specifically says that based on those plans, we may require the area as shown on the plan. Their plan shows twelve. I don't know that we as the board have the ability to come back and say, well, yeah, six is enough.
I think the regulation allows you to decide whatever you want. And if it was more convenient for the board to decide that this extraction of right of way has nothing to do with this expansion, you could require nothing. We would still be willing to offer our six feet, which may or may not make the city happy. And the rest of the conversation could go the typical route of a condemnation action.
I guess we'll have a differing of opinion on that because I understand it is, it's an all or nothing the way it's worded, not there's room for us to change what's on the C I P plans.
Okay. What else? Questions from the board? Yeah.
I do have a, a couple of things is on the original site plan, there was a loading zone sound at the back. You've now removed that loading zone and there is no loading zone sound on this plan. And I believe that's a requirement.
Yeah, so, so we've looked at that and we, we, uh, we are confident we can put a loading zone in that will meet the zoning requirements.
Okay. My other one is, is you indicated that zoning board allowed you a variance to stay with the parking as on the site. But yet there are six ADA handicap spaces that were never permitted by this board. So I'm not going to go against the plan, zoning and say, hey, wait, those weren't included. You really, you know, have a hundred and fifty six or whatever instead of a hundred and sixty two. But those spaces don't meet current regulation. For accessible spaces, you're saying? Correct. And parallel. They're only twenty feet long, where a parallel space is required to be twenty two. You've shown the five foot aisle, but that only results in a ten foot lane for the fire lane now, which is substandard. Because a car technically can use that entire hatched area as part of their ADA parking space. Say if my passenger, especially with one way, my passenger could be my person who needs the, you know, ability to get out of the vehicle. So I park. So now you've restrict, that no longer would function as a fire lane.
Sure. And, and we don't disagree with that. I mean, understand the constraints of the site and, and that, you know, the original approved site plan had the four spaces up on the eastern side of the site. The owners got a lot of complaints from their customers and said, you know, we've got mobility issues. A lot of older people go to the restaurant. You know, the owners felt like they had to provide something for their customers who had some mobility issues to, to have some parking that's sort of set aside for them.
And I'm not disagreeing, but is there anything that can be done to improve upon them? To provide twelve foot, to provide twenty by, you know, nine? If they can, then fine, as drawn.
There's a lot that can be done. And a lot of what you see here is already in the way of progress. What you see in front of the building now between the building face and Manchester Street is a reversal of the traffic flow that occurs now. It may even be two way. But it's now going to flow to the west. The reason being is that we'll now be able to have that exit and entry hatched lane on the driver's side of the vehicle, which would be a significant mobility and access improvement over what's there today, which is driver parks on the Manchester Street side and, and doesn't have that clear walkway and access way. So that's a change that we made in response to staff's original comments. And there is a condition of approval that is recommended if, if we were to get there. That discusses improving upon that even further and making sure that the appropriate lane widths are respected. And we think we can work with those things. We're only pointing out the condition that we don't think we can work with. The rest of them, I, I don't think the rest of them need a two month timeout. I think the rest of them are typical conditions of approval. And we work with staff behind the scenes to try and figure out the board's instruction in terms of satisfying those conditions.
As long as you're comfortable that those spaces can be brought into current code. Because I, I see what you're saying. You're saying, you know, Tate, we flip it so the driver comes out into the hatched area. But what if it's my passenger?
Well, so yes, in the ideal world, we would have a, 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 you know, that area on both sides. But the requirements don't require it, number one. And number two, there's no space for it.
But right, but what I'm saying is, is technically the hatched area can be used as part of the parking space if I need to leave space to the curb to the Manchester Street side. If I then do that, a fire truck's not going to be able to get to you. That's my concern. If you're telling me we can move this curb, I move that client, extend it twenty two feet and still meet, then fine. You've, you've satisfied me if, if engineering is satisfied. That's all I'm saying. Trying to tell me that, oh, we've changed the flow so that the driver walks into the hatched area is not solving the issue. All that's saying is, hey, we've shown you we can have a hatched area, but yeah, I just want to make sure.
I understand. And I, and I, and we hear you. And we're not asking for relief on that condition. We're telling you, we think we can work with staff to meet the intent of those regulations. And if we can't, then we need to work out something else. This is again, again, a, it's a retrofit of an existing site. And keep in mind, we do have other accessible spaces that again, are further from the entrance. But they do have that double loaded egress area. And so if you had a passenger that was in need of assistance, they could certainly park in those spaces or be dropped off.
And then I'm, right, but I'm just, we're kind of mincing words here, but if you can meet the condition, great.
We think we can.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, the, either the condition is met or we eliminate the spaces as being accessible and then become standard spaces.
Or we come back to the planning board and we ask for a modification of the condition and you again have the discretion to say yes or no.
I'm just trying to avoid having to come back.
I would love to avoid it myself.
For that, that aspect. Another one.
The other one we can avoid.
What's the requirement on ADA for, put those parking, you put all those parking spaces up on the top? There's a, there's a pretty good hill that goes down.
You're supposed to have them, they're supposed to have a two percent slope into the area. You're supposed to have the ones that are supposed to be really the closest part, possible parking spaces to the accessible entrance. So I agree, those four, five or six, whatever it is, are really the closest to the building. I get that. You know, I don't know if it's the planter island along the building scoots in a little bit and the curb scoots out toward the sign a little bit and we get what we need and get a twelve foot space in there.
But you said it's not long enough either, right?
Long enough. And if you notice, there's a little bit of a painted island on both ends. So there might be an ability, especially now that it's one way to kind of adjust that to get the extra.
So everything.
Or they eliminate one to make enough along the line.
Say you come in from the, from the east. So if you're coming down Manchester Street, turn left into the parking lot, you turn right to go into the, into the, what if you're coming up Manchester Street?
Come in, make a right, loop around. So that would be one way now. So it would be. So that would be one way now, so it would be, that's what they're suggesting, that would be one, not two.
You come in by mistake, you can't go up that aisle.
You could go around the building.
Around the building, and then loop back through.
None of it's ideal, it's all retrofitting to an existing condition. We're doing our best to make these spaces as convenient and accessible as possible. And all of the suggestions that you made are absolutely things we've discussed about. How do we get to a happy place on these items? And, you know, and, and as you say, you know, let's, let's not set ourselves up for a failure having to come back and say, we tried, couldn't do it, and now there's pressure to, to modify the condition. We've identified the one that we don't think we can accommodate, the other ones we think we can accommodate. They're typical, we would work with staff, and, and in the ideal world, never come back because we'd satisfied the conditions and the plan gets signed.
I, I just, like I said, I'm just not sure, reading that text, that we, as the board, can change from 12 to six, if six is what is shown on the plan. I, I read that to be it's an all or nothing. Either we may require it, or we don't.
We certainly would be comfortable eliminating that condition, and we would still give, we would still give the six feet for what it's worth.
Right.
I'm still not comfortable with the ADA slop. I helped somebody out of the building two weeks ago, as they were going up the hill, and they were, they were really working hard to get up the hill to their parking spot in a wheelchair. And I came up behind them and offered to push, and, and she was very happy to have me push, but she was, she was working pretty hard. I know the 2% slope, and I, I can visualize it on a ramp going up to a building, and it's got to be all that, if, if not.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually five, it's a 2% cross slope, but it's 5% in the direction of travel, so. It does need it, but it, but you're right, they're, they're, that's, that's why they put these spaces out front, was because the customers were saying, you gotta do something for us.
And you can't put them down the other end, because then they gotta go all the way up that drive aisle.
Right. It's a serious issue that we're taking seriously, which is why we have not asked for any modification on that condition.
I, I think they can do it.
Okay.
I, I'm looking at the plan, I'm familiar with the site. Like I said, they either A, modify the two ends and the striping a little bit to make sure they're not impacted, especially now if it's one way, that changes especially on the outbound side. Or it's, they ask to remove one parking space on the site to make them all 22 feet.
Okay, Teresa.
As usual, I'm confused. So, my question, back to, um, the right-of-way and the takings, is whether we do anything tonight or not, this is still an issue down the road. Because it seems to me you're agreeing to do six feet. Let's just say you, you know, you do what somebody said you don't do anything, you're going to give the six feet anyway. But the city's going to come to you, because they're going to widen the roads, you're going to have to deal eventually, no matter what we do with those other six feet.
Well, so the city would, assuming that happens, the city would be in the position of deciding, can we live with six feet?
Right.
Or do we need more?
Right.
Do we need 10, do we need 12, what do we need? Do we need 15, what, what do we need? They would come to the landowner, like they would any other landowner who doesn't, doesn't come to the planning board asking for anything, hasn't opened the door that the regulations open, and say, can we have some width? And in this case, the landowner would have a very difficult time agreeing to that because of the consequences that it would have on the parking lot. That's not the end of the discussion. That's just the beginning of potentially an eminent domain action, where the city says, we have good reason to take this area, the landowner won't give it willingly, or, you know, not with whatever we're offering. And there's a process for that.
Well, so if I'm understanding it correctly, and I'm not sure I am, so there's a process, and you're saying that impacts my parking, and there's a cost to that, so city, you got to pay us whatever, and you guys negotiate, um.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so that's going to happen no matter what. What we're talking about here, if I understand it correctly, and your quid pro quo is for us approving this, you are agreeing, they want, the city wants you to agree to the 12 feet with no, with no, um.
Compensation.
Compensation.
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the, the requirement in the staff memo is to give away the 12 feet.
With no compensation?
Nothing.
So you're giving away your right to say, wait a minute, this financially.
For something else.
Yes, this financially impacts me, and at this point, you're giving it away and saying, whether it financially impacts me or not, I'm, this whatever little bump on the back, it's so important that I'll give up my rights.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand correctly. But what you're saying now, if I understand it correctly, is you're willing to give the six feet without compensation?
Yes, we offered it in our reply memo, it's been on the table for a month. We offered the six feet, not, not because we're wonderful people, but because we should have done it 20 years ago.
Right, right, no, I saw that. The other question I have is to you, when Gripeni Mazda?
Yeah.
Both, both.
Mazda.
Banks and Gripeni.
Both, yeah.
Or did they, did, was, did they give that 12 feet when Gripeni Mazda went in? Or Banks, particularly Gripeni, because that's the latest one?
Yes, Gripeni did.
Yeah, did the, the, the city get, did they give up 12 feet?
I think we referenced it in the staff report, I, and I'm not, I'm not, can't say with, you know, certainty, I'm not being as familiar with the projects on the spot, but I believe the right-of-way that was needed in that area, which was probably 12 feet, is in multiple projects along this corridor, when they came before planning board, that was the condition of the approval.
I believe Gripeni gave a 12-foot right-of-way widening.
I can't remember whether it was equal on both sides, or if in that area, they shifted it because of utilities.
And this is, this is why I say, you know, not all stretches of road are the same. Not all requirements are the same. I don't know, as I sit here and I look at this capital improvement plan design item, whether six feet is enough, is it 10 feet, is it 12 feet? I don't know those answers. What I know is, the city has asked for 12 feet.
Right.
And we're just saying, it shouldn't, that shouldn't be the price associated with what we're proposing for a minor site plan amendment.
Well, yeah, because as I look at this, who knows whether, at the end of the day, because this is impacting your parking, that you would take the six feet on the other side, on the right, yeah.
That could be the outcome, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know. Okay, I just want to make sure I was understanding it correctly.
Thank you.
That the additional six feet is taking away your right for compensation for taking the parking. It's basically taking your parking. Okay, thank you.
I believe it has something, I don't remember the Mazda project, I believe it has something to do with the existing gas line and where the gas line is located.
I don't know.
I could provide a potential a little bit more context. So first of all, it's, staff is willing, staff received this, you know, initially this application was submitted in August of 2024, they resubmitted in February, and, you know, staff is willing to meet with the applicant, should this be continued, to talk about if and what could be done, or to come on some agreeable, you know, or at least an understanding when, before we, the application comes back to the planning board. Part of the issue here is that there is a full five-lane build-out for Manchester Street, and the right-of-way is for that. Part of this CIP 36 is the utility relocations, not only for the three-lane that is going to be constructed in FY 27, but for the five-lane, which includes a three-phase overhead utility line that feeds Pembroke. And throughout the years, city council has actually done a commendable job of going back, looking at this plan, and pointing out that, no, we can't do this, impacts who are butters. You'll have it less impact on the butters, less impact on butters. So to the dismay of the overhead utility companies, we are making to put their utility poles for the three-lane roadway. When this gets built out to five, which i- is going to be a ways out, they're going to have to relocate that three-phase utility. Other utilities, like underground telephone, are all being put out for the full build-out. So, you know, it would need to be something looked out. I don't think it would be proper to design it at this meeting, but, you know, we're willing to meet with the applicant to kind of explain some of these things, you know, their concerns, our concerns, and if and what maybe the best path forward would be.
Alec, sorry, if I could, so, on this side of the road, do you have a feel, is the additional six feet for grading, or is it for utility?
Utility.
Utility.
So could it be a utility easement?
We, we asked that question.
Yep, we, we've, we've explored some of these compromises, we want to explore them further. And issue is, you know, the three-phase overhead, all these public utilities, they want to be in a right-of-way, and it would require private easements for each utility and each private, you know, landowner along the corridor, which is going to be a tangle.
Specifically this, not the pole, but if this has a dramatic impact on their parking, their requirements for their easements are because of the overhead width of the arm up above, not necessarily for the pole. So I'm just saying, I've done roadway projects where we do easements, and there's multiple utilities on, on the pole, and we give one easement for utilities, and the property only gives it up. And I'm wondering if, if it's really an overhead issue and not a slope or grading issue that impacts the parking, maybe we need to have that conversation with the utility to find out, would they accept the parking to be under? There's plenty of times we've had parking throughout, since I've been on this planning board, parking underneath utility lines.
And if, if, if I could say something on that point, I, I readily accept all of what's been explained, I don't challenge any of it. I don't know any of it, I just say, makes sense to me. The issue that doesn't make sense to me is how that discussion relates to what we've proposed in our site plan application. If there's a conversation that needs to happen with the city about, could we give a few more feet for road, or easement, or whatever, and could the, and could the parking on that area be protected in some way so that we're not reconfiguring the whole site? Maybe there's a deal to be made, but it doesn't, in my view, have anything to do with what we're asking for approval for, which is to expand on the backside of the building in, in a back-of-the-house function. It's just, it's apples and oranges, and that's why I think the regulation says may. If it was to happen at every occasion, whenever an applicant opens the door, it would have been easier to say shall. You have no choice, you apply, give it up. But it doesn't say that, it says, think through what's being asked, and does it have anything to do with what you're being approved for?
And staff's looking, in 2002, there was a substantial addition, that their right-of-way was never granted to the city, and it all stems from that, and improvements that have been made on that site from then until now. And the impacts, it's, it, you know, parking's calculated by square feet of the building, which has been expanded to a threshold that required coming before the planning board, just for this application alone. And there, you can see in the staff recommendation, part of, you know, continuing until May allows April 16th, you know, you can see the wording for us to work with the applicant, the applicant to revise plans, to submit, to come back on May with hopefully, you know, a solid application that will have a lot less questions. Part, a big component of that is, you know, working with staff, figuring out the right-of-way, showing on the plan and having a path forward for that, or at least we know, you know, where we're going to go. But there's other issues. The six parking spaces, the accessible spaces that we alluded to in the front, you know, curb-to-curb, they show 24 feet, and they need at least 29 to make that work. So I don't know how they plan, and they very well may be able to, but I don't know when that accommodation is made, what impacts is that going to have? There's also circulation issues, loading, you know, you know, they've, they've indicated they'll be able to fit it, that's great. It's very tight, you're not allowed to encroach parking or access aisles with loading zones. Staff would feel a lot more comfortable seeing the proposal, because we don't know, to make the loading zone work, is something else going to have to change, and is there going to be a rip-off effect?
So, if I'm not mistaken, that line that comes out across in that loading zone area is where trucks load now, right? Right, right there, up, right?
Right here?
No, up, right there. And the truck that is on the maps on my iPad here is almost to the white fence, the way it's backed in. It's backed in straight across the, the road and takes the entire width of the, of the, of the parking spot. That's the only loading zone that's in the building now.
And that was part of the original approval in 2002, this was approved with the loading shown as it's shown now.
Okay.
But I, fortunately.
With the parking, with the parking that's there now, too?
Yes, the way, the way it's configured now, the loading zone is not where the addition is proposed.
Okay.
So, fortunately, we made a mistake, and we actually overcounted the parking spaces, which staff pointed out. We actually have three additional spaces beyond what we're allowed with the zoning variance.
Okay.
So we have the ability to actually convert three of the parking spaces into loading zones, so. Pretty confident that we can get the loading zone to work.
That, Alex, sorry.
No, that's all right, you know, there's just a few other circulation items. You know, staff has commented, we have a one-way drive that comes down here into this two-way access area. So we have a comment that this needs to be cleaned up, because you can't, if a car comes in here and every spot's full, now they're forced to drive against the flow of traffic or back up 80 feet, both unsafe conditions. And, you know, to reconfigure that, what is it going to look like, what will the impacts be? And we, you know, we alluded to, there's a, you know, it appears as though now there's a driveway access to the adjacent property. We agree with the applicant, whatever's going on on that other parcel, is that other parcel's deal. We identified some of the things that may be required, if they want to deal with it now or at a later date, but we do want to see this driveway shown. It could have adverse impacts on available parking if there's a drive aisle there. So there's, there's a few slight components, we don't, staff doesn't feel comfortable, depending on how they shake out, will they still have, still any compliance, will this be the same plan that's come before planning board? And all of those factors are why we're recommending to continue until May, so that the applicant and staff can work through that and have a submission for April 16th.
And again, we're, we're, you know, we've got a long track record of, of, of making things happen on your end and not making things happen on the staff end, and being able to work with it. Work with it to figure it out, but bring it back to us to, to, to give you the final approval on it. So I'm not, you know, I'm not crazy about saying, yes, let staff figure it out and let them deal with, with the issues. I'm much more comfortable getting the issues resolved and having you come back. Whether it takes one month or two, I don't know, that's, that's not my call, but I'm not comfortable moving forward until all the i's are dotted and t's across. I have no doubt that you guys can do it, I just want to see it and have them look at it, and then have them comment and give us the information on it, so that's my thought process, yes.
Can I just ask, why till May?
I, I don't know, yeah.
I mean, why does it need two months?
Because the deadline for the next, that's an easy one, because the deadline for the next hearing is today, at 4:00.
For the April meeting.
Yeah, for the April meeting. So in, in order to give staff enough time.
Can we table this?
Well, you would.
Essentially continuing up to May.
You would, yeah, you would continue it.
Continue it to April.
To April, you say.
I mean, except.
How do we continue to April when they're not going to meet the submission deadline of all the plans and documents?
The recommendation.
You would, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because that time, it's already passed.
Noting that the decision would have to be made in May, because you're going to be up against the 65-day.
Is there any confidence on the easement setback right-of-way reconfiguration that from the city, I know what, I know the, I know where the applicant's standing, but from the city's perspective, what's going to change between now and the? City wants 12 feet, and that's not going to change.
After years and years and years of design, we have a final design. It, it, everyone's accepted it, everyone's ready to move forward with it, the state's all right with it, the city likes it. We need 12 feet for a permanent solution.
So from a legal, from a legal perspective, it's a, it's a question that I'd have for the city solicitor to say, you know, where, where, where's our boundary here? How is the interpretation of a site plan change that the applicant's bringing forward, does that play into, again, I get it, opening up the, opening up the plan, allowing us to change it, make changes, put the easement in, but legally, are we on solid ground to do that? I don't know, it's not my decision.
The city solicitor did.
Way in?
Yes, Matt Walsh consulted with the city solicitor on the issue.
Okay.
So I have a question, is the city willing to pay for the six feet? Is that part of the negotiation? Because it's, you're taking their parking, which is a cost to them. I'm just asking if, because normally in these things, when the applicant says, no, there's a negotiation, the state or the feds or the city would, would pay, so.
If it's done through the condemnation process, then the city pays.
Right, right, but you're taking that process away.
If it's not done through, correct.
Yeah, and so I don't know whether, you're the lawyer here, I don't know. Yeah, and so, I don't know whether, you're the lawyer here, I don't know whether legally you can take that condemnation process away in something like this.
It would probably be a question for the courts.
Right, right.
The city solicitor is saying yes. The applicant's solicitor is saying no.
So, the solicitor's saying, you can take that process, you can take their right-of-way.
Yes.
If it...
There is precedent in New Hampshire. Other communities, neighborhood group one, they did that. They built the master plan. Everybody developed, had to give land, so...
And it's not the question of, I just want everyone to be clear, it's not the question
of the 12 feet, it's the process. It's the process of, does this particular application have a nexus and proportionality for the 12 feet? Or, does the process need to be condemnation? That is the question.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Open it up, see if any member of the audience has any questions or concerns, thinks so. Okay. Going to leave the public hearing open just for a second. Any other?
I would note that you would, with, you know, we kind of gave you, where you, you know our recommendation, you know, if you choose to grant conditional approval, we have some suggested recommendations. We'll note that we are part of the recommendation for the 12-foot right-of-way to be deeded to the city of Concord. We are recommending the planning board, you know, not require any, you know, improvement to be constructed by the applicant, and waive sidewalk fees, you know, not to, you know, so there's, you know, I don't want that to go unnoticed by the planning board in that event.
Okay. Okay. Any other parting comments, questions?
No.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing. So, we may leave them there just to ask them a question if we have any more questions, but where are we from the board's perspective? I, you heard me, I, I am cautious. I think we made mistakes on this property back whenever, that well before all of our times, or whatever happened, happened, and it's water under the bridge. I'm not comfortable moving it forward until I've got a better, a better staff report and maybe even a little bit more information from the city solicitor. That's my, my process. Whether it takes, again, it will take till May, unfortunately, but that's, sometimes the cookie crumbles. Thoughts, Councilor Todd?
Yeah, thank you. I'm having a hard time, I guess, seeing the nexus between this project, except, except, and, and the improvements, except for the fact that that's just what the timing is.
Yeah.
They want to do their addition right now, and guess what? We have this project on the CIP that we've been trying to do for years. You know, what about all the other properties on Manchester Street? I think it's going to go back to like what Jeff said. Well, they're going to have to be looked at on an individual basis. Maybe there's going to be an easement process there for them, so why can't they get an easement? But I, I think that the other comments from staff that were made about the other concerns that they'd like to, I generally always want to defer to staff. They have the expertise. If they're saying they would like to, they would be more comfortable seeing final plans for, for these other details where you have some concerns, I always want to try to defer to that.
Right.
But for that, I would, I could go either way. I mean, I could really, yeah.
I agree.
Are these other, I have to go back and read this. I'm getting late. Are these other details that need to be worked out specifically related to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's why I'm saying push-up.
Are the details that have to be worked out specifically related to the addition on the back, or are they related to the bigger issue of the, what's wrong with the property?
Traversing the site, a lot of it, parking.
Yeah, but is that related to the back?
It's a mixed bag. There are, some of them are directly related to the improvements required for this proposal, and then there are others that have been improvements made to the property without any authorization by the planning board that are now serving.
Shame on them, but that was then, and now we're here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're slapping your hand and saying, get it right. But, 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 and I tend to defer to staff, and in this case, I will say, this is a commercial property. They're a successful business. They want this little bump out on the back. I do see the issues down the road with the whole right-of-way thing. I'm not, I don't see, I'm like Todd, I don't see the nexus between the bump out and everything else. And, and, you know, if you guys are willing, to me, if you're willing to work with staff with these other things like the loading dock and all that stuff, it seems to me that can be worked out. But I just think they deserve the same fairness everybody else does on the right-of-way, and I don't see it with what this, this is. So, I would certainly be willing to give them the bump out. You guys work together on the other things, and then say with the right-of-way, you know, if you're willing to give the six feet, my God, that's great, but you, they're still going to come back to you for the other six.
And I don't disagree, but again, it's almost fruit of the tree as far as the, you add the bump out, which means you take out that natural circulation around the back of the building. So, now you've got a problem there. You've got a problem with the, with the handicap accessibility. We don't get a chance to go into them and say, you need to fix these issues unless they're before us for a project.
I think you can...
It opens up all of those things. If there was a way to, to take this off the table, is that what you're saying? Could you take out the...
Yes, yes, but I don't see how, I mean, I see, yes, you fix these things, all this other stuff. But when you get to the handicap accessibility, you guys know down the road, they're coming at you for another, for 12 feet. And so, you're going to have a handicap accessibility issue anyway.
Right, right.
So, I would hope that if we approve this little bump out, they start thinking about how you're going to deal with this handicap accessibility, because there's my question, there's a problem. But I don't see why we have to, why the right-of-way has to be part of this. But then I think it's...
Let me turn in this direction, then. Is there, is there any way to take this as two pieces? There's no way. I don't think there is, but I'm going to ask the question. The sticking point is the, is the right-of-way and the expansion from where we are now to six or 12 feet. Is there any way to take this project and, and approve this project without addressing that? No?
No, because that's the whole question.
Okay.
So, you're really asking them to go to the back to the drawing board and reconfigure the whole project? I mean, that's, is that what you're, I mean, I don't, well, but to me, if you're going to say you want the, you're taking, you want the 12 feet in order for us, you want us to force them to give you the 12 feet in order to approve it. That's what it sounds like to me. And so, if you want them to give the city the 12 feet in order to approve this project with no compensation, then to me, you're taking out the parking here, you've got the issue with the handicap, so they've got to do all of that reconfiguring just for this little bump out back here, you know?
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I think that's heavy-handed, frankly. That's my, my blunt opinion. Everybody knows, I don't have a filter, and it's late at night, and, and I don't have a filter, but I think that, I think that's heavy-handed. On a business that maybe they've made some mistakes, but people in this city love the red blazer.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I, I'm not with you on this.
And I agree, I mean, the commercial aspect of it, the, the like the blazer, love the blazer, go there all the time, but you've got to kind of take that off the table and not look at that and make sure that we're, we're making decisions the right way for the right reason. And, and again, I don't disagree with it. It is a little, you know, if everybody else up and down the street has got the, the space, but if somebody else across the street came and said, hey, we're going to address the passball, this is going to change off his, his, it opens it up, and it's going to be, you can do that, but you've got to give us six feet or 12 feet or whatever the distance is on that side.
So, I have a question that may be irrelevant or whatnot. So, the, the traffic pattern that does go in front of the blazer, where those six handicap spots are, are we, is it in violation of something if we totally move the handicap forward and do away with that, you know, passageway, and then everyone has to circle around, the circulation comes all the way around to get it? It is a one-way, and that, there is no traffic that can because you've moved the parking spot. So, so you can give the 12?
You need to fire lane across from the building. That's the big issue.
So, this puts, it puts the whole project way back, because you've got to redesign stuff. You've got to totally redesign it.
Yep.
So, keep, keep in mind, I mean, one of the other things we, we're talking about without compensation, but Alec mentioned that the city, city's willing to waive the requirement for the sidewalk, waive the requirement for the in-lu fee, so there's a, a cost value there that the applicant would have to pay for approximately 500 feet, 550 feet of front of the sidewalk that would be required technically.
Yep.
So, there is a value there. So, there is some sort of, I don't want to call it payment, but there is something that compensates, somewhat in a way compensates or doesn't require a payment to the applicant that could be used to, in the future, reorient the parking.
Okay.
I'm just saying that, that's right. Is that kind of, if I understood you?
Yeah, no, it's absolutely...
That's our recommendation.
If we choose to...
Well, if you choose not to go with our first recommendation, which is to continue to resolve some of these design issues.
Okay, so, the, the, the decision lies here. So, where do we, where do we feel?
I'd, I'd hate to see the applicant just throw up their hands and say, if you're going to require it, we're going to walk away. Because I, I mean, I understand they want to do this. There's a business reason. But I also understand there's a CIP out there that says, we need 12 feet. I'm leaning toward saying, I'd like to see them come back, give them time to work with staff, engineering, whatever, to try and see if there is a reasonable path forward from the easement. They, if they agree, they, I want the staff to also be able to look at a lot of those site issues that they have concerns with, because I think they're valid safety concerns. These aren't just, hey, we need five more trees here. We need, these are valid safety concerns.
Storage, all that, it's valid.
That, that I think the staff needs more time to look at, and maybe we need to kind of make sure everybody's...
That sounds like a motion to recommend movement to the...
May...
May 15th, or whatever, the May 15th planning, the May planning meeting.
We can't continue it till April.
No, because today's...
No, because they can't, they can't update the plans and then still submit.
We wouldn't have time.
Was it just bad timing of where this meeting fell versus?
Cycles on the third...
No.
It's always like that.
So, May, what is it, the 21st? Am I looking at that third week?
I have a drafted recommendation.
So, if the, if the applicant thinks that they could get everything done and submitted by next Friday, that would give us enough time to review. Alex, killing me as I say this right now.
But does that need our regulations on to when they have to submit?
There is no regulation on it. So, we have been using, as a, as a matter of policy, to provide staff with enough time to, to fully review everything, because we were getting, we were getting, we were getting revised plans submitted.
Day before.
The Tuesday before.
The Tuesday, and we just, we just don't have time. So, to try and be consistent and set a date, we just said, okay, revised plans.
Right.
So, there is no policy, there's no regulation, so that's why I'm saying that...
But they could revise it, but we may not solve the other issue.
If they can get them revised, well, so, there's two different issues here. So, let me be clear on that. If they think that, that they can get things revised enough in a week and back to us, we can review it in enough time for the April hearing. I'm just going to say that we'll do it. Sorry.
No, that's all right. I, my...
But the eas, but the 12-foot right-of-way is, is a completely separate issue, and based on what Pete said and with what Martha Drucker said earlier today in the meeting, we had a meeting with her for about an hour, it's 12 feet. The amount is not changing. They've already, they've worked with Hoyt and Tanner on three different designs, looking for different options over the past several months, and they need the 12 feet. So...
And if the 12 feet's not approved in this process?
And again, that goes back to what I said before. It, there's two different process for it. If they need the 12 feet, then it's just like anyone else who doesn't, who isn't applying for a minor site plan approval. Then the city approaches them, they go through the condemnation process.
So, I guess here's my thing. So, if they can resubmit by next Friday to get on the April, so you're not pushed out to, just hang on, bear with me. All right, I know you're, my guess, my question would be, is, I'd like to find out what the city solicitor says about, do we have the ability to say, six is fine now as part of your approval, because you should have given us six all along, and we'll take the six negotiations or whatever later. I, I kind of don't feel I'm comfortable that this gives us the ability to make that negotiation. This makes it sound like, if it's shown on the CIP, we either approve it, or require it, or don't. It's not a, because this doesn't say, may require up to, you know, what is shown on the plan. It says, do you require what's shown on the plan or not?
We can certainly ask the city solicitor for that interpretation.
Yeah, I, I think, because it's a moot point, because if, if we have no room...
So, let's see if we can finagle it, yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say, too, I, I think, I'm going to just guess, but I'm going to think that to get this all resolved in a week and get all this final, I don't, I don't see how they, how they can do that. I mean, that, that just seems unrealistic to me. But, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I just also think that that's, going back to what was mentioned earlier, that, you know, 12 feet really requires a redesign of this project. There's additional expense involved in this, so I could see where they would say, well, it's not worth it to us. Why, we don't, we don't want to invest the dollars right now. In, we want to invest the dollars in our, whatever, 900-square-foot addition, not that plus an additional project. But, to Jeff's point, if, if in fact there's a requirement on our part that we've got to, if, if it says 12 feet in CIP, and that's what we've got to approve, then we're stuck, right?
They could choose not to move forward at all now and wait till the project comes and they get paid for the taking, and then they redevelop.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the other thing we haven't really mentioned, is that if they know the project later on, it's going to take part of that parking, they're going to get compensated for that loss of parking. They may choose, take that money, redesign the entire lot to get the sparking back and do the 700 square feet or whatever the, that's the other option.
We don't really know what the cost comparisons are right now. Either that's the problem, that could cost a lot more than, yeah.
All right, kind of indicated if they, we went forward two months, they were going to pull the plug.
No, I think it was if you make, if you take the 12 feet, we pull the plug.
Both.
Or both.
When I said move to April, you were shaking your head, so...
Public hearing's closed, so we're not going to ask.
No, I thought you left it open, so we could ask some questions.
Nope, I closed it. Nope, we closed it. Okay, so, do we, are we moving forward to recommendation? Are we, I don't, again, so if you, if you, if you crafted your recommendation to say...
Alec had actually...
Language to say, if you could do it by next Friday?
I have language that might be a little more flexible.
Palatable?
My, my entire motion, which you may want to adjust parts of it, but was to recommend the planning board continue the public hearing for this application to the date certain of May 21st, 2025, to afford the applicant the time to prepare a revised site plan and response narrative, including showing the required right-of-way dedication and approved site circulation patterns for pedestrian and vehicle safety, for the board to review prior to voting on the application. Unless otherwise agreed to in writing by the city planner, the revised site plan and response narrative shall be submitted no later than April 16th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m., to allow time for staff to review and revise this half-report for the May 21st, 2025 planning board meeting. So, my, my thinking was, you know, if the city planner finds, gives a little bit more flexibility there, I thought.
Yeah, and I, I see where you're going with that, and I see your thinking. But the whole, the premise behind continuing to a date certain is so that...
Oh, fair.
A better notification, yeah. So, it's legally, we can't do it that way.
But we could use the same motion, but change the dates to March, whatever, to April.
Yeah, to a date certain of April.
Instead of April to May.
Yeah, to a date certain of April 16th.
April 16th.
Would be, yeah, continue it to a date certain of April 16th.
So, basically, the plans come in by the 31st, no, sorry, 28th. All right, let's...
Yeah, the 31st. We just have to have enough time to do it, revise the staff report, and the staff reports go to Matt to review, so...
Can I give you enough to craft a motion?
I mean, Alex's motion pretty much had it. We just got to change the dates. The only thing I think he didn't have in there was ADA parking. He had site circulation, but I don't know if he had adjustments to the ADA parking.
It all said required right-of-way. You may choose to disammit that entire site.
I would admit that. I mean, I, I, I was fine with what he said, but not the thing about the right-of-way, because that, to me, requires them to do a whole new plan. If you're including at this point, I think they should be like everybody else with the right-of-way dropped down the road, and...
But I think that's...
But I think because we've made Maz, Ringo Pony, and others do it as part of the redevelopments, they're in the same boat as them. They came into us looking for an application and review of a site plan. There's nothing in the regs that says, oh, if it's over square footage, you do this. If it's under square footage, you do that.
I think you're... I think your difference is in the scope and the size of the project. Banks and Grupony are major projects, this is, yeah, but anyway.
Um, I, I agree with Teresa on that because they were starting from scratch, a brand new building, they could turn it this way, that way, flip it on its side, whatever, to meet the twelve, twelve.
So here's an argument, Subaru's coming in.
With an existing building.
And theirs shows they're going to be doing the twelve foot.
Right, and they're going to be getting the twelve feet. And again, I, I think it's, it's.
You know, each business is different, and, and I just.
Their addition is almost sixteen thousand square feet.
I thought they were only in parking and stuff in the back, there was no building improvements as part of that.
It's two different applications, Jeff. Their application that they have before you now is just for, for, and it's not even parking, it's a display area.
Okay.
There will be a separate, there will be a separate application for the building.
And if I may say, the building is set back at, they are not a, a restaurant hospitality that needs, that is, unfortunately, we can't do anything about where the building is for Red Blazer, but they need that because of the way things are, you know, their, their ADA parking is just the way it is. But, like Capital Subaru or whatever, they're just set farther back from the road, so they have a lot more, you know, uh, space to, to make that work for them. But anyways, we're in a predicament, it's, it's like, but I'm, I don't know, I, I've, I'm, I feel like Teresa, that the project here is the extension on the back for them to have their operations work more smoothly, and when the time comes to, for them to have to deal with the twelve foot setback. Because of the clo, of the proximity to the frontage on Manchester Street, it will just have to be the decision made at that time, I don't know.
Other thoughts? And again, I, I don't know, I don't know legally what ground we're on to be able to approve a project where the city solicitor said we need twelve feet. I, I just am not comfortable at all saying, go ahead and do it and ignore the, ignore the request from the CIP side. Six feet, twelve feet, ten feet, doesn't matter, whatever it is.
I, I think, I, I think that's my big problem with this also, is that, is that, that and the additional comments from staff that they want to have worked.
Again, if, if, if the, if the, all the issues for, for public safety, for site traversing the site and moving around and all of those things are revol, are, are figured out, I don't have any problem, you know, on that aspect. It's the, it's the easement piece that's the hang up for me, and, and can't approve that piece of this without that tonight, and you can't, we can just reject it altogether and ignore it altogether. So I'm going to make a motion that.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I got to ask you something. You're saying you can't approve it without the easement. Well, can you approve it, uh, without the easement? Anything to do with the easement, and then they in their good graces give the six feet, and then you start talking about the other six feet.
Technically, the six feet was supposed to be given already.
No, 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 I know that, but what I'm saying is that, that, you just said you could do that, you, you could approve it with the conditions that they work with the staff on all the safety stuff, et cetera. You can not have, say anything about the, the right of way. They have said publicly, they have testified that they will, they were wrong and they will give the seat six feet. So they're doing what they should have done a long time ago, but they're doing it, and then this other six feet can be dealt with separately.
Yes, you can do it that way, because it does say may, so if you don't want to do any of it, you don't have to.
Yeah, but, but I don't think it's a plus minus.
But she, that's not what she's suggesting.
That's not what I'm saying.
She's suggesting that you say zero.
Zero, zero on the right of way.
Going to give six.
And they, they testify, you're going to do nothing on the right of way, you take that out, of what we're talking about. They testified that they made a mistake back in whenever, two thousand and two, whenever it was, and that they should have given the six feet and they didn't, and they're saying they will voluntarily now give the six feet because, to make up what they didn't do in two thousand and two, and then put them in the same shape with everybody else to talk to the city about the other six feet. Because you're going to have to talk about it at some point, you just don't have to talk about it now.
That sounds like a motion.
And that was a motion. Will you second me?
That is a motion that we have to second, so again, the motion on the, the motion on the table, just so I'm understanding it, is to, uh, is to ignore the request for the easement portion of this, to approve the balance of the plan as it's been submitted through instructions to work with staff to figure it out. There's a lot to.
And the applicant has agreed to provide six feet.
Uh, no, you know, I was just saying.
I don't want to deal with that though, and I think it's to, to just deny it, or just not deal with it at all. Whether they give the six feet or not is not.
Right, but I think that's, they've, they've agreed to it as part of their original approval, they were supposed to do it.
Have it noted in the motion that the applicant has discussed their previous.
But again, I think you open up a can of worms by saying you'll take the six feet and, and I think whether they did it.
Do we want to buy twelve or do we want to buy six?
I want twelve.
No, 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 but do we want to pay for twelve later?
Yeah, no.
If they're willing to give us six now and said later we only pay, pay for six.
I don't know if that's how it works though. I don't know.
I think let's just make it.
If we don't address it at all.
It was a condition of approval on a previous, let me just say, that it was a condition of approval on a previous site plan approval.
So by doing a new plan?
So, it's already there. That condition is there. The, the city just has not acted to go forward and, and claim it. I, I mean, they're in violation of their site plan approval. So it's, it's a simple matter to, if they don't do it, we send a notice of violation saying, uh, here's this condition of approval, we want our six feet.
By adding this new plan and this new approval, do we vacate anything that was previously done? So that's still in play. So what I'm saying is, don't deal with that at all. Just take it out of the equation completely.
So, yeah, so then my only question is, is staff comfortable being able to work with?
Well, that's a problem.
Right.
I'm not comfortable that the changes would be solely adminis, more administrative in nature. I think it could lead to revised parking configuration, access layout. Um, I, that's my opinion. I think that you would really need to see it to see if there's any unintended consequences to make those changes. I think, and it, I may not be comfortable bringing it back to the board depending on what the changes in order to correct the pedestrian and vehicle safety issues are.
I don't know what.
Kim, Kim, I'm sorry, but just, can we reopen the public?
Yeah, we will. I just wanted to, if you had anything else, I was going to hit Teresa.
Go ahead, Teresa, yeah, no.
I just don't see, I don't see what all that, I mean, you guys are going to have to work on it when you get to the six feet stuff. I don't see, you've got to work on the, the handicap stuff. Clearly with this, you've got to work on the truck stuff, but I don't see asking them to do a design of redesigning the handicapped access and redoing their parking in the front.
They're not doing that.
No, but that's kind of what he was saying.
Wait a minute, I don't understand why we wouldn't make them do that now, because they can do it without affecting the twelve foot easement.
Right.
Right, right.
You're saying you don't want them to do that now, or you do?
No, 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 I'm just, no, now I'm totally confused what I'm saying, but, what, you, you may comment about the ADA parking not actually being.
Right, right, I'm just trying to make sure, she's suggesting that still goes forward.
So, there's two different, there's two different options here. So, as has been done in many other cases, which is not ideal, but it moves the project forward. Right? And it's not ideal. Does the staff like it? No. But if it's not something, once we have conditional approval, there is authority in the site plan regulations for the city planner to do administrative approval. If the city planner doesn't think that it is, that it's more than administrative approval, then it comes back to the board. So, if staff, if whatever they, whatever they come back, if Alec feels like it's too much, then, then we bring it back to the board.
Okay, just hang on just a second, I want to reopen the public hearing and invite you back to the table.
And here we are.
And here you are.
Amazing.
You see me struggling.
This is how, this is how politics should work. Be, being able to sit at a table and disagree and then walk out of here and still talk about the kids and enjoy everybody's company, so.
And I have no doubt that that will happen and we're all good. Um, and you.
If other people want to get the hell out of here, they want to go, so let's.
And I feel badly for them. I've been there. And you see me struggling with not wanting to interject here because the hearing was closed, but because we're talking about how we could potentially structure this going forward, I, I want to try and clarify what we asked for, um, and what I think is, is doable and fairly typical. You, you, first of all, there are some waivers that were requested that would need to be resolved prior to a motion to grant minor site plan approval, but then that site plan approval would, could be conditioned upon conditions that are in the memo, all of which deal with these site circulation and safety and ADA and loading issues, which we recognize need work and we are willing to work on, as any applicant receiving a conditional approval would have to work on. We would support the idea of removing proposed condition number three, talking about the right of way dedication, remove it completely. It is our offer to dedicate the six feet that arose from the two thousand and two approval. We will do so whether you note it or not. Um, but, uh, the rest of these conditions are all, one, typical, two, appropriate, and three, the types of things that applicants and staff work on post conditional approval. But if there is a concern that we're just going to reach an impasse, we can't do it, there's not enough space, it doesn't fit, all of those things I concede are possible as I sit here right now, having only a few days, to digest these things and where we could go to address them. We might have to come back to the planning board and discuss whether or not those solutions are available to us. Not that we didn't try, or we won't try, or, you know, only one that really was a nonstarter for us was the right of way dedication. The rest of these are discussion points that need work and will do the work. But, but I wanted to comfort the board that there is a mechanism, if we simply can't agree with staff on how the layout should look and how the configuration should look, we'll just come back and we'll tell you.
Okay.
And basically, and they have to, i- if there's a major enough change, I'm not going to sign off on it.
And either he, if he signs the place.
Right.
So, i- if I'm hearing this correctly, so the motion will be, well, I know we have to grant the waivers, I'm just kind of, kind of wore this while, the thing. So we would grant site plan approval, precedent conditions one A through L, two A through D, remove three because it mentions the right of way, renumber four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and then B, those are all the precedents.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what we're basically saying, so.
You just made the motion.
Well, that's what I'm trying, I, I can't make it officially yet, I'm trying to make sure, before we go through the whole process of granting waivers and all that, if we just know we're going to be in an impasse in the last piece, I'm trying to work. The applicant has said they'll do the six no matter what, we'll deal with that, that's separately of this approval, and, and I appreciate that sentiment.
Okay.
Does that make sense to people?
Yep.
I know it puts a little more pressure on staff and engineering to review it and feel comfortable with it, but I, I'm, you know, pretty confident we've got good staff and I think the changes here can be dealt with. They've been dealt with in the past.
I want to close the public hearing if there's no more questions.
I just, I just think that, uh, taking this out, taking three out, seems to be, so thank you for that suggestion. That seems to be the way to go, and also with what you had said about, you know, you have the administrative authority basically to say, no, this is not, we have to bring this back to the planning board, so I think, between that, I think I'm, I'm comfortable.
And the applicant recognizes that.
Right.
So let's, everybody, now we can go back to your official close of the public hearing, waivers, all that.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing unless you guys have anything else. Good, thank you. Okay. Close the public hearing, look to staff just to make sure that, I guess, everything's.
While you're in, while you're in discussion, um, you may want to consider, you know, one of the recommended waivers had, you know, a twelve foot, you know, right of way dedication, then there was to waive the requirement to construct sidewalks along the frontage as well, and not require them to pay a fee, and the planning board may want to revisit that waiver, if they still want to grant it that way or require a fee.
Is there a sidewalk there now?
No.
No.
Not along their frontage, but there, there is on Gardens Falls Road, right up at the other side of the intersection, and the regulations would require a sidewalk.
Chairman, if I could, when is the CIP start?
Twenty seven, so it's three years.
Two years, we're in twenty five.
Build a, yeah, but.
So if they, I mean, there's no sidewalk there, there's nothing that connects to the other, next property up and continues. So if we waive the requirement of constructing a sidewalk, can we, can we table the discussion of in lieu fee of the sidewalk and make that part of the negotiation with the additional right of way?
No.
No.
So we have to waive it incompletely or ask for it in lieu fee.
Either have to waive it, or ask for the in lieu fee.
Right.
Waive it knowing that it's going to get ripped up in two years, three years.
Well, that's.
Right.
Yeah.
Or an in lieu fee.
Or don't do anything and.
Why would they do that now?
They'll have to put the park, they'll have to put it there once the waiver, once the right of way is put in. So if you do an in lieu fee, wait for the three years.
Right, then it just becomes part of our CIP.
It becomes part of the CIP and then you got a paved sidewalk up the side of the hill, up the side of the hill.
But that sidewalk's going.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Comfortable with that?
No.
Okay.
No, that, I, I, I'm not understanding that.
What? We, we require people to put sidewalks on.
But why are you requiring them now to put a sidewalk?
Same reason we require.
He's saying do the in lieu fee now.
Yeah.
Why are you doing the in lieu fee now?
Because they're required to do it as part of the site plan to put sidewalks.
Site plan requires you to do a sidewalk.
So what are you saying is, the site, the site plan regulations.
Wait, wait, just for adding this little thing on the back requires a sidewalk?
I get, we're getting hung up on the little thing in the back, it's a site plan. Either a minor site plan or a major site plan, it doesn't matter how big it is, how small it is, it's a site plan, and, and it, and it opens up the,
Triggers.
It triggers everything.
Yep.
Then that's the trigger. It doesn't matter if it's bank Chevrolet and you got to put a sidewalk in, it's, it's nine hundred feet or whatever, nine inch square feet. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, I'm totally confused, but anyway.
So, in lieu of, Alec?
It, it's, you're prerogative, it would be more sensible than make them install.
Yeah, I want to make them install a sidewalk, for sure.
To me, to me, the question is in lieu or not at all.
But there's no end, I mean, the, the end trigger is, when they do the project, they have to pay in lieu when they do their nine inches?
It would be a condition of final approval.
Condition of final approval, okay, got it. Okay. How do we structure a, how do we structure a motion to, I guess we can go right through the waivers, we don't have to.
Instead of them involved like we normally do, we can go right through them by one.
So, um.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, I closed the public hearing before, it's why Ari's.
You need to do the findings of fact first.
Biting his tongue off over there, so our findings, our findings of fact, again, we're using the content that we've got in our packets, the information, uh, the volumes of information we received, the testimony we heard from the applicant, the discussion we had at the board level, uh, as our findings of fact, to make our decisions tonight, and those decisions are outlined in your packet under fi, eight point one? No.
Three?
Three.
Three. Right?
I think we should take the waivers individually.
So I'm going to take the waivers individually, eight point three is to grant the waiver request for section fifteen oh three twenty three E tabulation of the site plan regulations. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver request as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point four is to grant the waiver request for section sixteen oh two twelve B grading and drainage plan of the site plan regulations. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, eight point five is to grant the waiver request for section sixteen oh two three erosion control. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver request?
So moved.
Second.
And grant a waiver from section twenty one oh two sidewalk waiver, sidewalk required.
You got to vote on it.
You got to vote on it.
Oops, I'm sorry, yeah, eight point five is to grant that waiver, uh, do we have a motion, do we get a motion on the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, now, eight point six is to grant the waiver for sidewalk required, so how, do we want to re, re, redo that waiver? Alec, uh, in lieu of, or how do we want to word that?
I could provide you some recommended language, if you want to go from that.
That would be great.
You, uh, you could require the applicant, per section twenty one oh two sidewalks required, to set aside equivalent funds to be placed in the city Esper account instead of constructing the required sidewalk along the frontage of Gardens Falls Road in Manchester Street. Prior to final approval of the site, uh, prior to final approval of the site plan, a cost estimate shall be prepared and submitted to the city engineer and clerk of the board for approval. Upon approval, all funds associated. Upon approval, all funds associated with the payment in lieu of construction shall be provided to the city prior to final approval. All other, uh, yep, and that's it.
That's it, just like we did for Breakaway Drive earlier in the night?
Could it sound familiar?
Would someone, it's, and that, we'll, we'll take that right as eight point six and replace the text that Alex gave us for eight point six, is that okay? Yes? Yes. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, grant seven point, eight point seven, uh, grant minor subdivision, uh, yeah, grant mi- minor site plan approval for the construction of a new twenty-five hundred ninety-eight square foot addition to the south side of the existing Red Blazer Restaurant building along with the associated site improvements at seventy-two Manchester Street in the highway commercial district, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions, one A through L, uh, two A through D, striking three, and then four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten will be need numbered to three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, and subsequent conditions, one through ten. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you, I'm sure, again. Hopefully not for this.
Not for this, actually.
Wait a minute. We've reached ten o'clock, so we got to close our meeting tonight, sorry Phil.
Thank you for your patience, guys, as we work through it.
Okay, so...
Do you want to go?
I guess we're okay.
Come on up.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Um, do you need for me to come back after, if I'm going to sit out on the last one?
No, because we'll have a quorum to be able to vote for closing the meeting and everything.
But I do need to make my statement.
Yeah, you do. We can, we got to wait for Krista just for a second to make sure she's taking notes.
Yes.
Just popped up. Forrest, I thought after that, I would have said, hold it for next month, thanks.
Sorry.
Just have a quick bio break, hang on just a second, we're just waiting for our note taker to come back.
No problem. Keep it brief, don't worry. Keep it brief, this one's going to be easier than that last one. I'm sure you've already looked at this out for far.
Mud.
Ninth inning stretch. Ninth inning stretch. As opposed to seventh inning stretch. Yeah, it's true.
All right, let's read item nine H into the record if we could.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Amanda?
Um, excuse me, but due to conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from this agenda item.
We won't make you come back for the, for the other business on the agenda at the end of the night.
No, very jealous.
You may, you may be excused, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, um...
Yes, okay.
Sorry, Enri, can you read nine H into the record?
I can. Nobus Group on behalf of Banger Savings Bank requests approval for major site plan review, architectural design review, conditional use permit application for driveway separation, and certain waivers from the site plan regulations, including a determination of completeness in public hearing in one step for the new construction of a three thousand six hundred seventy-two square foot bank at one eleven Loudon Road in the general commercial district.
Okay, so we've got a waiver request to determine the application complete and set the public hearing for tonight. Should we handle the waiver request first or...
Sure.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver to hold the public hearing the same night as the determination of completeness is set? So moved. I'll second that, any discussion?
We had a second idea.
Oh, so we had a second, Deena, sorry.
No problem.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and has set the public hearing for tonight, when, and we will set the public hearing for tonight, would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and not the development of regional impact?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, we'll give Deena the motion and Teresa the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and has set the public hearing for tonight, when, and we will set the public hearing for tonight, would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and not the development of regional impact?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, we'll give Deena the motion and Teresa the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing is open, let's get a quick staff update on this if we could.
Okay. Uh, this is the, the applicant worked, the applicant worked extremely hard diligently as the planning board may recall. It came before, it was incomplete, deemed it incomplete, so they've addressed all the completeness issues, kudos to them for doing that. And anything that's left, it has been dealt with as a condition of approval, there, there's no issues. One thing, the applicant chatted with me earlier after the staff report had already been published, and the first two items for the architectural design review, the recommendations from the architectural design review committee, there are issues with those from safety reasons for site and emergency access and exiting the building. So it's, it's items A and B, they would like those stricken, one has to do with planters at the entrance, and the other has to do with adding additional landscaping, um, along the driveway.
Where are those?
They're in the architectural, yeah. If you keep on going down or over, 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 it's eight point three, I think.
Six point one under the ADR, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's just the staff report, the actual, yeah, oh, wait.
Eight point two.
Eight point two? Yeah, so it's eight point two, A and B.
Architectural design review approval for the proposed thirty-seven hundred square foot drive-through bank, so A for planter boxes and B for additional landscaping?
Yeah, uh, next to the driveway, it just, it, it impedes, um, safe egress and fire access and site...
Who wants those stricken?
The applicant. So he'll address that further, but I just wanted to point that out, that, that he had already discussed that with me after the staff report had already been published.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, welcome to the table, if you could state your names for the record?
John Ralston, Nobus Group.
Winnie Porter Brown from Warner Street Architects.
Great, tell us a little bit about this project.
So we're proposing a thirty-six hundred square foot Banger Savings Bank branch building. It's going to be located at one eleven Loudon Road. As you can see from the site plan, we have a pretty narrow, thin site. We have a one-way, um, one driveway access as per the site requirements, existing condition has a two-access curb cut, so staff will really like that. Circulation is counterclockwise around, around the building and one-way. Drainage is collected by hatch basins in the rear and is infiltrated into a subsurface gallery. We also included a bioretention area in the southwest side of the site, you know, the town, town's always like that. Utilities come through the main entrance and go along to the west side of the building. And we actually had to shift that, working with the town, to avoid plantings and root balls, et cetera. But we feel that the, you know, the project is an overall improvement to the site, we're meeting the requirements for parking, ADA, ADA requirements, we have the, I think, the request was to have eleven-foot wide space with five-foot wide hatch. We also have a six-foot, I mean, a six-inch sewer service, which is something that came up earlier. But yeah, we feel confident in complying with all the conditional approval items, we wanted to touch in on one, one item that was, that was mentioned regarding the traffic. In particular, the, um, the fire truck, the fire truck access, we showed a truck turning plan that I can bring up here in the... Oh, so, wrong one, sorry. So we, we had actually addressed the comment, um, the, the pro- the program shows the fire truck, um, the front of the fire truck is a, is a flat face, of course, but the fire truck that, that you guys have in town has the bucket that extends over into the front. Now, that's not representative in, in the truck turn program, so it just shows the front face of the, the fire truck as the bucket. So there's a small area on our plans, hoping that would open, but... In progress. That overshoots the, uh, the curbing. And there was a comment on the staff report saying that, um, you know, we had two options to change the curbing, which we didn't want to do, and the other one was to remove the curb where the truck overshot the curb. So that is in this region. Here, as you can see, it overshoots it a little, but, um, again, I wanted to just reiterate in our, so maybe individuals, I actually have a small video to kind of show you what that is, that I think Enri really liked. But the overhang of the front of the, um, fire truck is, you know, eight feet high, so that's the section of the overhang that goes over the curb. We actually are showing where the tires go, so there's not going to be a bumper drive over the edge of the, of the curb. I can show that short video that, again, Enri really liked.
Video is fun.
So yeah, I can run out these on any of the program, but that's what the turn would be, and as you can see, the front edge goes over the, over the curb, but the wheels and the truck in itself doesn't. So therefore, you know, I, I don't think that comment will be applicable for this from the standpoint of truck access. The two items from the architectural board that we, we can bring up was the, was to remove the bollards in the front of the site, um, and put planter boxes, and that was from a visual aspect. What, what we didn't want to do was, zoom in here. What we didn't want to do, we wanted to provide protection for anyone coming out of the building from the front, from the front door. So if there's an emergency, people coming out, those bollards are going to protect people running out in an emergency situation, so the planter box that we didn't fill is going to provide a stable enough security for those people. And as you, as you saw from the, um, previous truck turn, sorry for going back and forth, it's, it's pretty tight, uh, you know, it gets, it gets pretty tight when the fire truck comes in, so we don't want, you know, emergency people running out and then the fire truck to save them, hit them. So we thought that the bollards are going to be a safer, um, safer section. The other one was the plantings on the, on the, on the east side, which we had already shown to be the five-feet tall build, tall trees on the right side, so those are the two kind of comments that we had from, from the architectural board. Let us all have, if you guys have any questions?
Great, thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns? Jeff?
So I was out at the site, somebody nicely left the gate open so I could actually get in and kind of go around, which was kind of nice. There are some stumps and trees in between you and McDonald's, and there's quite a grade there, and I'm kind of wondering, how are you going to remove those stumps and trees without being on the butter sprout?
Um, so you're speaking of the trees in the rear?
Yeah, almost, no, back where, maybe where that dumpster is, where you're kind of showing that potential pavement connection or whatever, there's some trees, there's stumps and things there, and they're kind of up on a little bit of a hill. That and the installation of that chain-link fence, like, right up against the existing dilapidated, uh, stockade fence that McDonald's has, I'm just wondering if it's going to require you to coordinate with them or get some approval for access or something, which can be worked out, I'm not saying that's a, something going to hold up approval, but I think that's something you're going to need to kind of deal with because it's tight back there.
Yeah, as you can see, the survey, as you can see, just sees a tree line, so I think during construction, that might be something we had to work out with, with either McDonald's or whoever, or to locate these, this tree, again, we just have the tree line, so I don't exactly know where.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually within that, along the drive aisle is the tight spot. I'm not worried about out back, that's fairly flat, it's right there, down that side as you come along.
I mean, this tree looks like it's on their property, so obviously we wouldn't touch it, you know, only obviously, if things are not property, we would...
Right, but if it's on your, then how are you going to install your fence if it's on their property?
Well, the, the, the tree boll represents the, the, the branches and leaves and sections, so, you know, the actual trunk of where it is.
Right, understood.
We're looking to, I, I think we move the fence as needed to, to not, you know, di-, you know, damage their tree.
Okay, and that's fine, I just want to make sure, so you're not needing to come back in front of us for some type of minor site plan review back, you're dealing with it now. The truck turn, one of my only question, well, two questions is, if you could go back to your fire truck real quick, you said that you're concerned when the fire truck turned in about, like, aiming right for the building because it's really tight, did you think about softening that first radius?
So, as you know, we are doing a conditional use permit and we wanted to keep, we actually had two accessways at, at first, to kind of align the front side on the right and exit on the left, but in working with the staff, we, we made it one wider one, and moving it left, we won't be able to get the truck in.
No, 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 I think you're misunderstanding me. So you come in off the street, and as they start to make the turn into the white, right way, that radius right there on the inside corner toward the McDonald's edge, could you soften, flatten that out, make it a little flatter so that the truck actually almost aligns a little straighter into that lane quicker? So that aisle becomes a little wider right on that corner.
Yeah, I mean, the, the program is conservative, of course, I mean, I think, I think we, I think we looked, looked at that, we want to kind of keep the offset of the opposite radius, I mean, regardless, we can get the truck in and, are you making the comment to add back the planter boxes or...
No, 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 I'm just, so you're showing a radius there, whatever it is, I didn't look at the plan, thirty feet or whatever.
Yeah.
If you make it thirty-two or thirty-three and it pulls that radius to the right a little bit so that it's a wider throat for the fire truck to fit through there, then it's not really a concern that it's going to be hanging out over by the bollards because it could actually move more to the right.
I mean...
Do you follow where I'm at?
Yeah, no, I, I see you're looking at, at an amendment of the, of the radius here.
Right, I'm just wondering if that can happen and just make it, like I say, a little softer going in there, I'm just, I'm just, I want to make sure the fire truck has easy, unimpeded access and that those bollards aren't going to be a concern for them, being that tight, that's all.
I think I'm, I, I mean, yeah, I think we could, we can make a minor change to that radius, um...
Well, just look, work with staff and if Pete or others are, overroll me and say they're fine with it, okay, I just, it looks really tight, and if the bollards are going to be there, it makes it seem very tight.
Yeah.
Especially if you start talking snowbanks and things.
We could run an additional truck turn to kind of, to make it, make it go a little bit wider so it, it angles into that radius, that S-turn a little bit better, and that might give you more space on the bollard side, because, like I said, the other, you know, the other, uh, truck turn was slightly different, so it's kind of that angle of approach.
Yeah, the only... Yeah, that, and those were really the only two things I had, I just, it seemed really tight in there, making the truck turn in, um, and then, like I say, trying to construct along that fence line, along the property seemed to be potentially problematic.
We actually moved the building back and lost a drive-through lane, you know, working with staff to accommodate the truck getting into that S-turn, so, you know, we've already been kind of working back and forth with staff to make this work.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to see all the trees too, looks good. I did see a little teeny spot for snow storage, I don't know if there's any requirements on snow storage, but it doesn't seem like that's very much for that. There's a lot of pavement that's going to be plowed into the back there, you're going to lose parking spots on a big storm. I think in the top left-hand corner, you've got snow storage on the plan set that I'm looking at on page C two.
And we have a note saying additional snow storage will be trucked. We have a note saying additional snow storage will be trucked.
Right, will be trucked out, so I saw that.
I also wanna point out that the snow storage there is all tributary to the stormwater system, so if anyone like to, you know, go on directly into the waterline or something, it will be, go through the treatment system and be treated via, before it infiltrates.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't have any other questions. Counselor Todd?
Uh, yeah, thanks, I just had to comment that, uh, all the other projects that we've heard tonight that had landscaping, uh, plantings, were native.
Yep.
Um, and I'm just looking at your landscaping planting schedule, I'm noticing that there are several items in here that are non-native. I guess, where does staff come out on that, I mean, there's not, probably not a, an actual requirement, but I would like to make a suggestion that you lean toward the native species rather than the non-natives to the extent possible. It's just better look for the local environment and...
Sure, that makes sense.
And, and ultimately, really, the, a lot, I mean, I understand you're picking some of the species that are hardy, but ultimately, the natives are, are overall hardier, and it's actually a better value probably for you long-term, that they should last actually longer than some of the others. That's my only thought.
We're talking about Loudoun Road expansion, we're gonna need twelve feet. I was weak and late.
Everyone needs twelve feet.
I just wanna bring that up for a little levity.
I wanna shrink it, not widen.
Okay. Okay, other questions? I don't think there's anybody in the audience that has any questions. No? Okay. All right. We'll close the public hearing, thank you very much for your testimony. The... Pieces and parts, it doesn't seem like it should be harder than this, but that's a, a pretty good site improvement for that particular lot, so. Okay, in your packets, we've got, um... Sorry. Sign review applications, okay. So again, using the, as our findings of fact, we'll use the information in our packets, the, uh, testimony we heard here tonight, and the, uh, information and the video, just great.
Video was good.
Um, on the turning radiuses as our findings of fact. Um, so, based on that, we are at eight point two in your packet, uh, which is to grant architectural design review approval for the thirty-seven, thirty-six hundred and seventy-two square foot drive-through bank and proposed signage as pre- as submitted and subject to the following conditions, and again, uh, condition A and condition B were recommended to be stricken. Anybody have any concerns with striking those from the recommendations? No? So, uh, grant architectural design review approval with, uh, condition C and D, they'll be renamed N V. Uh, the collared siding shall be gray instead of white to provide contrasting colors per section five point three materials and colors, and the rear door shall be painted a dark color so as not to highlight its presence in accordance with section five point three, three again, materials and colors. Would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design review approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is to grant the waiver request below for the li- the listed sections of the site plan regulations using criteria of six seventy-four forty-four three E and section thirty-six oh eight of the site plan regulations, and those are outlined in section fifteen oh three, I'm not gonna read them all here, so under, under your, uh, in your packet, under eight point three, we've got A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver request as outlined?
Second.
Motion's made in the second, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, eight point four is to grant the conditional use permit from section twenty-eight seven eight C two, separation of driveway in non-residential districts of the zoning ordinance for a driveway located closer than two hundred feet from other existing driveways on the same or any adjacent lot based on the criteria being met. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
Second.
Jeff, is this, is this where you would wanna add a condition about massaging the radius, if you do?
I was thinking it could be a precedence.
Okay.
Condition, suggest.
On the site plan?
Work with engineering to see if we can.
All right. Make a note of that, hold on to that thought. So we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point five is to grant the site plan approval for the construction of a new thirty-six hundred and twenty-seven square foot, uh, drive-through bank services at one eleven Loudoun Road, and proposed signage as submitted and subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one A through G, and then, uh, A through F. Do you wanna add a precedent condition there?
Well, it goes down.
Well, A through F, and then G, I. B, one, two, three, four, five, six.
So we'll add a...
And then H.
A B B.
I G.
And C C.
Holy cow. L M N.
It goes to A A. Yeah.
Okay, so where are we on?
B B will be to work with engineering to adjust the radius in the parking lot to better accommodate the truck turning into the one-way.
If possible.
If, yeah, if possible.
And you had one about native.
Native plants.
Yeah.
About C C.
Of native plants, did you?
So that's B B and C C?
Plant, native plants as much as possible.
That's right, preferred use of native plants, right.
Those are all outlined in precedent condition one. Uh, there's precedent condition two, three, four, and then subsequent conditions one, wowzers, through twenty-one. Let me go, too long, I get all the way back to the beginning here. Would someone like to make a motion with those two additional, um, approvals to grant that site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in the second, any further discussion? Did we miss anything, Emery?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you are all set. Thank you for your patience, sorry for the late night. Okay. Any other business legally we come before the board this evening? No? Staff, anything else?
Nothing.
Nothing. All right, with that, we will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.